We have the Commissioner's meeting. Back to order for this evening's six o'clock item, which is formally. We'll be in the room here. We'll have to stay with the seat. This evening we will have our second public hearing for what was called the sixteen after two, after nine, at zero ten, matter of formalizing the formation of the Fernridge Community Policing District. And then we'll have a companion item to discuss after the public hearing. So I'll get the background here. So I, what's the word? We have Commissioner Carr is away at his grandson's and what?
His new grandson.
Grandson, yes, his grandson. This evening, so he's with us by phone, so he'll listen to your comments and then we'll put him on his speaker at the end of the public hearing and he can make comments. Traditionally in the past, what we've done, or what this board's done, is when we travel into a Commissioner's district, I'm the Chair this year, but when we travel into the Commissioner's district, it's a choice, but we allow the Commissioner of the district to run the meeting. So this evening, I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Bozovic and he's going to conduct the meeting for us this evening. So Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. And welcome everybody to the meeting here tonight. And I want to thank the folks at Deep Woods for hosting us. What a fantastic facility this is to have out in the district. Would have been at the high school, but the high school was booked. Would have been at the middle school, but the middle school was booked. Tried the elementary schools, we tried several public venues, couldn't find one. Were really desperate to find something that was out here in the district and Deep Woods came through for us. So I wanted to just thank the folks at Deep Woods for hosting us tonight. So we are going to start out talking about a formation of the district here tonight. And what we're going to do is start with some of our staff and the folks that have been involved in organizing this, explaining exactly what it is we're proposing to do for both the Board.
Can we back back there so we can see you?
We try to.
If it's possible to just move this over there so we can see.
Yeah. If you want to swing it around for now, I just was trying to make the speakers not face their back to somebody.
Thank you.
We're trying to put it in a place where folks could address both the Board and the audience.
Can't hear.
If we can please keep your side conversations down, you should be able to hear. We're just having a little discussion about moving a podium around, it wasn't really for the whole audience. But, so tonight.
Jack up!
I will try and speak as loud as I can. Unfortunately, the amplification through this system is minimal. And I will do the best I can project and I hope that folks that come to speak during public comment will also do their best. But it will be most helpful if we can keep side conversations down, keep comments, hold your applause as far as, you know, when folks are speaking, that will make it the easiest for people to hear. So we're actually going to start tonight with a little bit of presentation about the district. It's also for the Board's benefit to remind us what we're going to be voting on later tonight. It's an opportunity for us to ask staff questions that are technical before we actually open the public hearing and we start public comment. So we're going to start with that staff presentation first, and I'm going to call Alex Kyler, our Intergovernmental Relations Manager up, and he'll start talking about what we're actually doing tonight. So, Mr. Kyler, and please project.
Good evening, Board. I am Alex Kyler, your Intergovernmental Relations Manager. And my role tonight is to explain to you more in detail what's in your packet and what the action necessary tonight is in order to finalize creation of the district. That will be followed by an item, if you so choose, to refer the measure to the county clerk for preparation to be placed onto the May seventeenth ballot. So the, a county service district essentially is a local government for all intensive purposes that is governed by the Board of County Commissioners. County service districts are often made reference to as special service, special districts. They're a little bit different because a special district actually has an independently elected Board of Commissioners. Interestingly, Sun River is actually a county service district. So county service districts under Oregon law can be formed for a variety of different purposes. And the reason you've gathered tonight is to create an allowable county service district for the provision of law enforcement services. Formation of a county service district is governed by, under state law, by Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapters 198 and Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 451. These are admittedly pretty confusing statutes. There is a lot of reference between the two, but I feel confident that what we've placed onto your Board order tonight will give you all the authority you need in order to finalize the creation of the district. And I think we've talked before about the length of time that it's taken, taken us to do this. We first learned about the effort to ask for the creation of a district back in October. And, you know, November, December, January, a little bit of February, I think we've actually done pretty remarkable work to get everything in front of you in the manner that it needs to be. So, a little bit of history is that back in October, Neighborhood Watch came and presented to the Board, Neighborhood Watch from Veneta and Fernridge area, and talked about their concern for lack of public safety services in this area. You ordered, you passed a motion on November 3rd asking staff to get involved and to assist the Neighborhood Watch. You had an order on December 8th that initiated formation of the district. And under state law, you are required to have two public hearings, then pretty much to refine the details of the district. And those, anytime you made changes to the district, you had to get the City of Veneta to buy off on those changes. And the City of Veneta has bought off, the City Council bought off on two separate occasions, primarily due to changes in the boundaries that were established. So as long as you don't make any more changes to the boundary, the City of Veneta does not need to pass any additional resolutions relating to formation of the district. So in your Board packet tonight, you've got a memo from, that I wrote, that deals with a number of different issues, but essentially tries to cover all the things that are in the Board order in front of you. So you have to, for example, when you create a county service district, you need to put a name to the county service district. You need to provide a legal description of the county service district. And that is, a legal description is, actually outlines the boundaries of the district. You have to declare what sort of service facilities would be in the district. And I, I want to emphasize that under law, service facilities doesn't quite mean what we would all think it means in terms of a physical location. It really has to deal with the services provided. And in this case, they're law enforcement services. You have the option, under forming a county service district, to address what's called dissolution of the district. So I want to spend a little bit of time on dissolution because it is a unique characteristic of the Fernridge Community Policing District that you're forming. A district usually is formed and exists permanently until it's dissolved either by a vote of the people that are inside the district or by a determination of the Board of County Commissioners. The exception to that is that you can form a district as long as at the very beginning you state when you want to dissolve it. And under state law, you have to make that dissolution within ten fiscal years from actually the night of the order finalizing the creation. So that's within ten fiscal years of tonight. The, the previous hearing, you asked that the district be dissolved in five fiscal years. And so that's in your order tonight, that the policing district would dissolve in five fiscal years. Now, there is an exception to that rule as well in state law, which is that you get to hold a hearing at the end of that five-year period. And the Board could decide to renew, if you will, the district for a period again up to ten fiscal years. There is no telling at this moment what that future Board will do in five years. What we know is that the order you're passing tonight dissolves the district in five years. That future Board will hold a hearing to determine whether the district could continue. And the district could conceivably continue for another period of time, up to ten fiscal years. The caveat there is that permanent districts in Oregon, when you set a permanent operating tax rate for a district, they rarely are able to last infinite, into infinity because they run out of money. And so you'll see that there are a lot of districts in Oregon that have actually passed local option levies to support their permanent rate as they, as they evolve. I think the fire district here has an operating levy. I think the library district here has an operating levy. Lane County has an operating levy. So there are tools that are available to districts to create additional funding, but typically, it's pretty rare for them to be able to last, for, for example, fifteen years into the future. So that future Board in five years is going to have to make a decision about whether the budget is actually sustainable. And they, that future Board may not change the rate. I mean, once the, once you set the permanent operating rate for the district, it cannot be changed unless you dissolve the district and recreate a new one. So that, that future Board, the only ability they're going to have is to say, is this sustainable for an additional period of time? And if so, how much longer? Or they may say, it's, we've got some other idea that is present, and so we're going to let the dissolution take place at that point in time. We've talked at that previous hearing about the reasons for creating the temporary nature of this district. It is a, it is accurate that other cities in Lane County are watching what's happening here tonight, and there may be an opportunity to dissolve this district and create something that's larger. It may be that this one's working fine and there just needs to be more time, and so the Board could pass an order at that point in time saying, well, we'll, we will continue at the same permanent rate for another period of time, not to exceed ten years. And they would have to, just as you're doing tonight, specify that date in the future. So again, you've created in this, from the last public hearing, a Board order that says you'll dissolve the district in five years, but be aware that there is a procedure under state law that allows you to review that dissolution. And you could, or that Board in the future could decide to continue the service district. So that leads me to the next thing that the formation order has to have, which is the establishment of a permanent rate, sometimes referred to as an operating tax limit. So for example, Lane County has a permanent rate of a dollar twenty-eight per thousand. The proposal on the table is to create the Fernridge Community Policing District with a permanent rate of a dollar sixty-seven per thousand. The, any governing body of a district has the opportunity to levy an amount up to that taxation limit. So each year, when your Budget Committee comes together and makes recommendations, you, as a seated Board of Commissioners, certify how much you want to levy, up to a dollar twenty-eight, to the assessor. In most cases, I think in every case that I, at least I've had experience with, we've, the county's always levied to the full extent of their levy. We've determined that a dollar sixty-seven will sustain the operation of the district for at least a period of ten years, and Christine Moody, the Financial Planning Manager, will get into more detail on, on the budget, proposed budget for the district. The other thing that you, that we heard about in the public hearing was a request from the City of Veneta that, since the City of Veneta will be encompassed by the district and included in the district, that they were feeling like they wanted to have some sort of closer relationship with the Board of County Commissioners. And so in your first order initiated, in the, in your first order that came after your first public hearing, you created a seven-member, up to seven-member Advisory Committee with two members appointed by the City Council of Veneta. So there will be, need to be, after formation, and if this measure passes, there will need to be an effort to seat an Advisory Committee that would advise the governing body of the district. Finally, there are a number of things that, under state law, that staff is supposed to take care of once you have formed a district, including notification to the Secretary of State. The boundaries have to be certified by the Department of Revenue. There are copies of the formation order that need to go to the tax assessor, to the sheriff, and I think that's it. So those are all encompassed in your order as well. And again, I think, I think we've got all the details covered in terms of actually forming, according to state law, a district. Your action tonight would finalize creation of the district, knowing that anytime there is a county service district that also has a permanent rate associated with it, that question of formation and the permanent operating tax limit needs to go to the voters. And that, again, is your second order tonight, which would place that on, or at least get it closer to being placed onto the ballot. So that, I'm going to conclude.
So, any questions for Mr. Kyler from the Board?
I have a question.
No, we're going to, no, this is not audience, this is the Board's questions at this time to staff. Any questions from the Board? Commissioner Sorenson?
Jay, I wanted to ask about the, the revision on, on this page that's labeled Revised Two Nine. I think it's the ballot caption question and summary.
Commissioner Sorenson? I, I was going to get to that in the second part because that's really part of that referral that'll come after the public hearing.
Okay. Well, maybe I should ask it then if it's after the public hearing. The dollar sixty-seven you mentioned in your presentation, that dollar amount has been a function of, of the meetings we've held so far, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, that, that isn't something that just jumped out of the sky. That's something that we've been talking about. Okay.
As you recall, when the, when the Fernridge Neighborhood Watch first came to the Board, you know, I think they were looking at, they really hadn't decided on a rate either, but I think they were ballparking about a dollar eighty. And through a number of meetings and different analyses, we made some adjustments to that and have concluded at a dollar sixty-seven, and I think Christine will be best suited to answer specific questions about the budget.
Okay, thanks.
So if there are no further questions for Alex, I'll call Christine Moody up, our Budget Analyst.
So just before that, there was an iPhone up here?
That's Commissioner Forrest, wasn't it?
Oh.
That's the fifth Commissioner. And before Christine gets started, I just want to note there's some empty chairs on this side of the room for folks that want to sit down. There's quite a few. If you want to shuffle on in and grab some seats now while we've got a quick break, because it's, you're going to stand for the entire meeting and this could be a long night for you. So take the opportunity to grab a couple of these empty chairs over here, there's actually a couple even mixed into the audience here. And I'll also take this time just to ask people if they would silence their cell phones, turn them on buzz or whatever. It's also kind of distracting for somebody up at the podium. And if we can all, if we got most people seated, so if you want to move, move ahead, Christine?
Okay, thank you, Board of Commissioners. So I will go over some highlights of the budget for you, and because a county service district is fairly new to Lane County, point out a few things that might be a little bit different that we might not be used to. So as was mentioned, the Neighborhood Watch group came to the Board of Commissioners and they came with already having looked at the services that they were interested in. This budget that we'll be talking about tonight was built on providing twenty-four-hour patrol, which you can hear a little bit more about from the sheriff coming up, who can talk about those services. So we reviewed the budget and then the Assessment and Taxation Department looked at the boundaries that were proposed and came up with the value of assessed land within those boundaries. So we then used those two figures together to come up with the rate that is needed. So that's how the dollar sixty-seven was arrived at. This budget for the district is also based on a contract that is proposed from City of Veneta that you will hear more about this evening, I believe from the mayor, discussing that City of Veneta has requested to purchase point five FTE of an officer to do some services that would be specific to Veneta, that would not be specific to the district. So that is one important thing that you'll also continue to hear, that the district will receive the same service level regardless of where you live within the district. And so Veneta is purchasing an additional halftime officer to pay for those additional services. So this district will have its own Budget Committee. So the Board of Commissioners has a Budget Committee for the county as a whole, but this district will have its own. It will consist of the Board of Commissioners plus five residents that must reside in the district and be registered to vote. So that will be your Budget Committee. The budget is sustainable as it's built for at least the five-year period, going out to ten years. It still looks good based on current projections, could potentially even go out fifteen years. A big piece of that is because of the ramp-up that will happen in the first year, meaning on July 1st, they won't be able to have all of the officers in place, they will ramp it up over time. So that means the amount spent in that first year will be carried forward by the district to help make it sustainable as they go forward. So I think with that, I'm open for questions.
So, any questions from the Board for Christine? Thank you, Christine. So next I'd like to invite Sheriff Trapp to come forward and speak about the role of the Lane County Sheriff's Office relative to the Fernridge Community Policing District, if it is formed. Sheriff Trapp?
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart, or Chair Stewart and Commissioners. First off, I would say that as the sheriff, I'm excited actually to see members of this community taking control and having discussions about their own community safety. And, and to that level, I'm all behind this conversation. It's a big reason that I'm supportive of, of this proposal being put forward to the broader community discussion, which would be the vote of the communities. This proposal would provide a permanent and dedicated law enforcement presence for these communities. This is something that the Sheriff's Office in Lane County has been able to do for about, consistently for five years. I'm also confident that the unique public safety needs for the City of Veneta will be met through this. And these services will enhance our ability to support and work with the students and staff in the area's schools in a very positive way. The enhanced deputy sheriff staffing will aid fire departments in getting medical care to community members in dangerous and often life-threatening circumstances. I believe this is worthy of the community consideration and a public vote, and Lieutenant Halverson and I are both here to answer any specific questions as far as service delivery and, and what that would look like. In general, we are certainly able to provide the, the services that are proposed in this plan, and, you know, I'm confident that all of those pieces of this will, will, would come together should this pass.
Any questions for Sheriff Trapp from the Board? Commissioner, or Chair?
Stewart. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sheriff Trapp, when this proposal was brought forward, the boundary and the number of officers that were deputies that were proposed to serve there, it's my understanding that, that it was designed in a way to be able to somewhat, I know you can't guarantee a response time, but it was, there was a response time that was figured. Can you give a, a little bit, I mean, right now, there could be a response time from the Sheriff's Department that could be upwards of thirty-plus minutes depending on circumstances with dedicated deputies to this specific area. Can you give an idea what kind of service that you're, is hoped to achieve from this district?
Yeah, I think in general terms, the fact that most times with this level of staffing, we would have more than one deputy on duty. And between the two, in general, response times would be, you know, within the district boundaries, ten to fifteen minutes. And, and at worst case, the distance from one end of the district to the other, drive time. And, and, you know, certainly the, the level of staffing that this proposes doesn't guarantee a twenty-four-hour presence, but certainly the, the ability to staff more than one often will, will be a significant improvement in the response times. The other thing that this would do is provide the investigation and, and response and reporting and investigation of property crimes that currently we just aren't staffed to do. So, you know, those crimes that currently get a report in the mail would actually get a deputy from this district to take those reports. So there are, there are some, what seem like can be sort of the insignificant pieces of this, from a quality of life perspective, there'd be investigative efforts that we would be able to provide in, in and amongst the, the call for service responses.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Thank you, Sheriff Trapp. I'd like to call Mayor Sandra Larson of Veneta up to speak to the role of Veneta in supporting the district and district, city issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Commissioners, good evening. I speak for my fellow councilors in expressing the City of Veneta's support for the formation of the proposed Fernridge Community Policing District. The city supports Lane County's placement of the citizen-driven initiative on the May ballot and agrees to be included within its boundaries. In fact, Veneta is more or less at the geographic center of the proposed area, service area, and the Council concluded that opting out and maintaining or establishing independent law enforcement for the city would not serve the best interests of our residents, either logistically or fiscally. Many citizens, both inside and outside the city, have expressed dissatisfaction with their levels of police protection. Last fall, a pro- Last fall, a proactive group, the Neighborhood Watch Group, determined that a special policing district was the best and perhaps the only way to increase that coverage. After a good deal of consideration, the Veneta City Council agreed. The Fernridge Community Policing District would provide 24/7 patrol coverage within its boundaries. Currently, Veneta's contract with Lane County Sheriff's Office provides for only 20 hours of coverage daily, usually by only one deputy. Due to vacation time, sick time, training, court time, et cetera, there are often days when this is not the case. Veneta's contract deputies only respond, when available, to emergency or backup situations outside our city limits. Limited patrol coverage outside has already been alluded to by Sheriff Trapp. Each year, the cost of Veneta's law enforcement contract increases, requiring a larger portion of general fund dollars to the detriment of funding for other city obligations. Funding for Lane County patrols outside the city is precarious at best. In the proposed district, all residents would enjoy enhanced patrol coverage, and the district as a whole would benefit some economy of scale. If the district is formed, Veneta will no longer need to fund its Lane County Sheriff's Office contract at its current level. The council has agreed to instruct the budget officer to prepare the proposed 2016-17 budget to reflect a reduction in the city's property tax levy equal to the proposed district rate. At this time, expected to be $1.67 per 1,000. Any additional rollback of taxes to be levied will be addressed during deliberations with the Budget Committee in May. The city intends to assist the enterprise by constructing and leasing back to the district a physical base of operations. In addition, once an agreement, pardon me, for services has been reached, the city will fund one-half of a sheriff's deputy, well, actually, one-half of a sheriff's deputy's time to provide services within the city that are not included within the district's proposed operations. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your coming out here tonight, giving local residents, and it's quite a turnout, this opportunity to provide their input.
Thank you. If you want to wait a second before you sit down, let me see if there are any, is there any questions for the mayor about Veneta's role in the district? Nope?
Nope.
Thank you. So the last person we have to, before we open the public hearing here, will be Steve Reister, representing the Citizens Group that requested us to begin this action and to speak about what exactly citizens envisioned here and where we are. So Steve, I'll let you just go from there.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll be real brief, because I know you all want to get to the public hearing. Our group came together to look at what was needed. We held town halls, we got together in lots of different coffee shops, and held meetings with the city, held meetings with the county. We networked for three or four months, coming up with what could be possible. We identified the lack of 24/7 deputy coverage as a priority. We recognized that even if we did have a deputy, oftentimes cases weren't getting prosecuted. So it was important to include dedicated deputy district attorney time, so that if somebody violates their property and the deputy does his job, they actually go in town and are held accountable, which doesn't happen in many cases today. We identified the need for a school resource officer, and that's included in the platform. And finally, in working with the fire district, we understood the need to have a two-deputy deep coverage. Oftentimes, if there is no deputy in the area, say they're away on training, or they're out sick, and there's nobody to cover, oftentimes hampers the fire district's ability to serve our residents timely in the event of illness or injury. With respect to the boundary, the boundary was established in a collaborative effort between the Lane County Sheriff's Office and the fire district. And as was mentioned by the sheriff, it was about, how can we service where it has been identified that we are underserved? I guess I just have this message to give, Commissioners and to all of you. I would hope that we all remember, whether we are for this proposed Fernridge district, undecided, or supportive, we are neighbors first. And I guess that it is the proponents' hope that we have a meaningful conversation and that tomorrow's headlines are reflective of the character of our community. And we are going to hang around and will be available to answer any question anybody has after public hearing, specific to the platform. And Commissioners, I think that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Reister from the board? Thank you, Steve. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing on Order Number 16020910 in the matter of finalizing the formation of the Fernridge Community Policing District. And I'm going to be calling people up, and I will also be calling the person that is next up to on deck. And we have approximately, 80 people signed up? Or somewhere close to that? So I'm going to ask folks if they would try and limit themselves to two minutes. I'm going to set a timer for three, and I will be brutal cutting people off at three minutes, so that we can try and get to everybody. If you've heard somebody make your point before and all that, if you just want to say, you know, "I'm against the district. So-and-so said what I was going to say about taxes," or "I'm for the district. So-and-so said what I was going to say about needing property crimes taken care of." And get off this stage. There'll be a lot of people who'll be happy, because they'll get to get home and see their family sometime tonight. But, you know, so we'll, you know, we'd like to hear from everybody, so if you can kind of limit yourself as best you can, we'll work on down through this list pretty quickly. But the first person signed up is Cheryl Ball, followed by Leona Kate, it looks like. And I'm going to apologize in advance for butchering people's names.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's good to see you all together, and it's my-
And state your name for the record, please.
I'm Cheryl Ball. I live in Junction City. And first of all, I came here against this, because I'm retired, and I came to the country because I couldn't afford to live in a city. And consequently, now I'm learning I can't afford to live in this country. I know we need more policing. I have nothing against the policing, but I don't know how your neighbors are, but my neighbors will call me and say, "Did you see that pickup?" We kind of watch each other. Gentlemen, thank you.
I'm going to ask that everybody please not applaud. One, it will greatly shorten the meeting. And two, it's kind of intimidating for somebody that might want to come up and take a, you know, the different view. And it's just polite not to applaud during a public hearing. So no applause, no cat calls, no boos. And we'll move through this a little bit quicker. So we have Leona, followed by Rick Kate.
My name is Leona Kate. I live in the Alvador area. I have approximately 56 acres. I have been at that residence for 40-plus some years. So I am not a newcomer to the area at all. Recently, it came to my attention that a group from Veneta are concerned over what they call a growing drug problem. We have growing drug problems all over the state. I am vehemently opposed to the snatching of my property, as I seem to feel. I have not been notified of any kind of a meeting or anything, and yet here I find I am about ready to be taxed, above and beyond what I should be. You know, you move into the country so you can take care of yourself and not have to put up with a lot of people. So you learn to take care of yourself. If a deputy isn't available, oh, well, there will be one, but what will he do after a crimes committee? Patch on the heiny and say, "Oh, sorry"? Yeah, they send their stuff to the DA's office. And many times, even if there's a police reporter, there's been a sheriff attending, the DA doesn't prosecute always. It's the extent of the crime. But there again, I say, "Take care of yourself if you want to live in the city." Now, the Veneta Elmyra area has always been known as a high-crime area. These people have moved there so they can get low-cost living and have less crime. Okay, you bought it, now pay for it. Don't make us pay for it. Just a minute, I'm sorry. Okay. They said they would get a person in the schools, this money would, okay? I'm not in the Fernridge School District. I'm in Bethel. I pay very high school taxes there. And I don't feel I should have to pay Veneta's school taxes. Why should I pay for that? Why should I pay for a resource officer for their school when I'm paying for one in our school? Okay, spending $100,000 for county staff to form a new district is ludicrous and unacceptable. We already have an enforcement agency in place. I say we fund them more and start something new. If you are successful in your endeavor to form the district, you will, number one, double the taxes of many persons in the area, which means many homeowners-
That's your three minutes, Leona, thank you. That's your three minutes, thank you.
Okay, many homeowners will pay more mortgage, and renters will pay more rent. They've wasted $8,000 already on the gender-based poll they took. I'm opposed to that. That could have gone to the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Rick Kate, followed by Jim Varco.
Rick Kate, in the Alvador area. As Leona stated, it falls into the Bethel School District. So yes, my concern as far as funding a officer for the Fernridge-Veneta-Elmyra School District should not fall on our shoulders. The gentleman who's up here speaking first made mention to you passing this Fernridge Special District. I really hope you all have not made that decision already in forming this district, and will reevaluate after listening to the public our concerns. The $1.67 per thousand mention. Mayor of Veneta stated they are already proposing their budget to reduce the citizens of Veneta's taxes by the $1.67 amount. That tells me that the City of Veneta wants the people in the outlying areas to basically pick up the tab for the services they want. Now, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have state police. If people in the City of Veneta, Veneta proper, want better policing than the people in the City of Veneta, need to take care of the funds for that, not the people in the outlying areas. In creating this district, you've already said that you can probably go out 15 years with the funds at $1.67 per thousand. What's going to happen down the road when that $1.67 per thousand isn't enough? You going to get more? You going to ask for more? That seems to be the trend, and we need it to stop. We need to stop now, live within the budgets. People don't realize that this $1.67 per thousand is going to affect rental properties. It'll affect homeowners and property owners. It'll also affect the renters in a negative fashion, because the homeowners and the property owners that are renting those properties out will have to raise the rates. You're going to create hardships for people of low income that are renters and such. That needs to be taken into consideration. At this point, I'm done speaking. I'm strongly opposed to creating a special district.
Thank you. Jim Varco, I've got one. It's Len and Nancy Shepherd. So I assume it's one or both of you speaking.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Varco. I'm a resident of Elmyra, west of Elmyra. A number of years ago, our residence, our home, was burglared. When I reported this to the Sheriff's Department at that time, I was told to, and I quote, "get over it." As a result of that, I got the message that I was responsible for taking care of protection of myself and my family, and I spent quite a few thousands of dollars and considerable time trying to make that happen. I am opposed to this measure. There are points, portions of it, that I think are possibly beneficial. But I have little confidence that the county will follow through and abide by what it is proposing. I'll cite an example. Not too long ago, I had a situation where I needed to, or I encountered a deputy of the Sheriff's Department driving on property that I'm an owner of at double the speed that we have clearly posted on the property. It was a non-emergency situation. I had a meeting with Sheriff Trapp about this, and came away from that meeting with two things that were made very clear to me. First, Sheriff Trapp and his deputies will determine what is reasonable to do on people's private property. Our wishes, well, when I raised that question, I was told, "Our wishes are unenforceable," and that is a quote. So with that type of mindset of no courtesy, no respect for property owners, why would we be comfortable with the idea that at some point, the Sheriff's Department's going to say, "Well, Deputy Smith is on vacation. Let's pull Deputy Jones out of Veneta to take their place." And what are the people going to do about it? Thank you.
So Len and Nancy Shepherd, followed by Eve Senkovich. Okay, so then Eve Senkovich, followed by Karen Reister. What's that? Okay, okay.
I'm Eve Senkovich, living in Elmyra. I'm like previous speaker, lived here more, almost 30 years. And one of, I hear somebody back there. I'll try to talk up, I don't have a very good voice. They talk about all these people that were surveyed. I've never been called for a survey. I've lived here almost 30 years. But one of the things that I looked at, and it was not this Order 16, it was Order 15, which must be a step back. But in the second paragraph of that order, it talked about all the stuff they're going to do. And one of the things was forming Fernridge Litter Patrol. Well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't want my tax dollars going for a litter patrol. I would rather see if we're going to have police on the street, let's have them. So my mind goes to the fact that money raised by this committee, $50,000 or something, they've made some pretty placards and stuff, that most of that money, according to their website, came from corporations. In my mind, that says what this is all about is image and marketability. Patrols don't mean anything, but image and marketability does, because the corporations, i.e. developers, have money to bring people in. Well, yeah, save us some taxes down the road, but hey, get real. Like with the city, state, county, feds, it's tax and spend, tax and spend, tax and spend. And I honestly don't feel I'm being represented. spend, and I honestly don't feel I'm being represented in this county by anybody. I, like the previous speaker, also had an issue with law enforcement, and I was told, I didn't get a mail report. I was told to come down to the Sheriff's Office and get a report. I didn't get the privilege of mail. Another time I called, and this has been 25 years ago, I was told it's not a priority. Well, it was to me, but apparently not to the Sheriff's Office. And as a funny note, you know, bring up, and there's probably some people that realizes, I was out here, moved out here when they had, before, I mean, I'm sorry, I was in law enforcement before I moved out here. And it was a joke in the law enforcement committee, community, and that includes the Sheriff's Office. In fact, it was them that said it. They liked coming out here because they got to go to the country fair. They made a lot of overtime. And what this whole sentence was, "We like to work the maggot fair because we make overtime." And if that's the way you feel about the committee, that two years ago, how do we know you've changed to this time and place? I don't know. But another thing is when they talk about patrols, I am familiar with law enforcement. You've got officers out on patrol, they stop and make car stops. There's your patrol off the street. They met Dewey arrest. There's your patrol off of the street. He's got to investigate, interview, sobriety test, book. He's off the street for two or three hours at a block.
Your three minutes is finished. Thank you.
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
Three minutes is-
Sorry. Okay, that's all I have to say. Somebody else.
Thank you. Karen Reister, followed by Dave Kirk.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here. My name is Karen Reister, and I'm a volunteer with the Neighborhood Watch in Fernridge. I'm an administrator for the Fernridge Crime Watch page. My husband and I have five beautiful grandchildren. Some of them have started into the Fernridge Schools, and some of them are smaller than that, but they are very precious to us. I used to believe that crime was not a big issue in our area. I used to sleep with my windows open, leave them open in the summer when I went places. And unfortunately, that reality has changed for me. I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe like I should. I've learned that there are things going on in our community through my Neighborhood Watch affiliation, through my Crime Watch affiliation. There are things going on in all of these communities, not just in Elmira, not just in Venida, not just in whatever. They're going on in Alvador, they're going on in the south part of our district area. We hear it all the time. When we hear people say, "There's no crime in my area," we know it's not true. A lot of this crime is petty crime, but that petty crime turns ugly, and we had that happen in our community recently. What was drug crime turned into death. Somebody died. Two people died, three people died. Three people died in our community because of petty crime. At one time, I was very frustrated with the Sheriff's Office as well. I felt that, you know, I didn't know why they weren't able to respond in the way that I had hoped. I was surprised by that. I was used to having the thought in my head, "If I call the police, they're going to come," and I came to the realization, "If I call the police, maybe nobody will be able to come." That was a really hard realization for me. When we started into this project of looking at what we could do to improve the policing in our greater community, what we learned is that the reason that we can't have the policing that we would like to is because we have never in Lane County paid for our sheriff's services. Those services have never been tax-supported. They have always been subsidized by federal timber dollars, and those timber dollars are gone. We hope to get them back. We wish to get them back, but we're not going to get them back. They're gone. So now we have to step up, put on our big girl and boy panties, and we have to pay the bill. It's time for solution. This is not a money grab. There are no corporations involved in all of this. We are just citizens, just volunteers, just your neighbors. That's it. The only businesses that are involved in donating to this campaign are businesses in this area, might be wood products, it might be stores, whatever. There's no big business that's behind this, no Koch Brothers-
Karen, you've got your three minutes now.
Done? Okay. Well, I support, obviously, and I hope the Commissioners will put this forward to the ballot. Thank you.
Dave Kirk, followed by Mel, and I'm going to guess it, Verst. I can't quite read the
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everybody. I'm for the district. I'm currently the patrol group captain for the group. I live outside Venida city limits. Joined the group because of the increased criminal activity in the area. My group and I spend a majority of our patrols within Venida city limits itself, since this is where the bulk of activities occur. I'm concerned for the safety of my family, the value of my property dropping, and the education in our schools suffering because of the increasing drug problem that no one here is able to address. Opponents to this proposed district will state there is no crime. I beg to differ. My group sees a city that comes alive in the morning hours. Kids with backpacks, on bicycles, others walking neighborhoods, on people's yards where they shouldn't be. When questionable activity is occurring in the area, folks call our group to investigate, to see if anyone is out on patrol. I've witnessed numerous times when the group needed to saturate an area because of the increased activity after 1:00 a.m. in the morning, where we had no deputies nearby. Fortunately, through our presence, the activity fades but surfaces again somewhere else. It never stops. We're all volunteers who cannot handle this burden alone. We need your help. We join to make this community safer for everyone, and I've put in some long hours, a lot of loss of sleep, to ensure public safety remains a number-one priority. I would prefer law enforcement was dispatched instead because only then are crime statistics validated. Neighborhood Watch dispatches don't get tallied. They're not officially recorded, so there's no more criminal behavior that goes unchecked and unobserved. I can't imagine how discouraging it must be for our deputies to spend the time making an arrest and seeing those same suspects on the street the next day. We hear about it, too, as a group, because citizens ask us why those folks are back on the streets. What can we tell them? Help may or may not be on the way for you. We need to support one another, people. To quote a familiar adage, "There's no I in team." This proposed policing district makes the offered services all-inclusive, from arrest, arraignment, and incarceration if necessary. This complete package serves the entire community by getting criminals off the street, helping youth and those who need it before they start a life of crime. We have to step up as a community and protect our own. There is nothing stopping criminal activity from continuing its destructive behavior until we can make this community policing district a priority and a reality. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So Mel, followed by Carol Johnson.
My name is Mel Van Glev. I live over on Jerusalem Road, clear across the lake. I'm totally against it. My opinion is ridiculous what it's going to cost everybody, which they say they have a drug rate problem, Eugene. They don't have a drug problem. They're not the only ones. Everybody does. So why, when I live in Eugene, Eugene address, should I have to help pay for out here, this is Venida. Venida says they're the ones that's having such a big problem. Pick up the newspaper. It's nationwide. So why should this have to, everybody from out of the Venida area have to pay out here? It should be, everybody nationwide should have to pay, not just a few people. I've been broken into. I've been robbed, but the cops, they couldn't find who's ever I did. Then they wouldn't prosecute.
Carol Johnson, followed by Walt Curtis.
My name is Carol Johnson, and I live way out in the boonies, so far from Venida and Elmira, that I see this as a really good benefit for Venida, but very little benefit for us. I do appreciate that you are having this meeting. I do appreciate that. I wish, I wish there had been more notifications, there had been more on the internet, those things. It was very hard for me to find any information at all on this whole situation. Of course, Venida wants it, but that is not going to benefit me, and I'm sorry, but that's, I don't see spending this big money for Venida to be bailed out. Even Venida was saying with one police officer, they were having trouble having people there, and yet they want to stretch this boundary way out, have a little bit more police service, and not any more coverage for us. It's diluting what Venida already says is not working. Number three to me is Sheriff Trapp even inferred that the most he would do would be to help out Venida, and we, our benefits, if we were way out in the boonies like me, that we would be getting a better response for our investigations, not for response. I didn't hear that at all. As far as the officer in the school, I think that's an awesome idea, but I really think that the school district should be adding that to their tax base rather than us adding it to this district-based property tax. The other thing that I thought was very interesting was that this five-year business is not going to be voted on again, that the board can simply turn it over again and again for 15 years. I think that would be very unfair and not taxation without representation. So I'm just totally against it. I don't think there's any, I mean, if I was in Venida, even if I was like Jay that was right next to the border, I think I'd be more involved in it. But being as far out as we are, I don't see any, and I got to tell you, I really admire the police force. I think they're doing a wonderful job for what would they have to go with. I really do. But spreading them out that far isn't going to help anybody out in our district. Thank
Walt Curtis, followed by Ron Babjar.
My name is Walt Curtis. I live over on Briggs Hill Road. My main complaint with all of this is the way they set what the boundaries were. I mean, who knows where Globe is? Now, I do now. It's west of Walton. The line, the south line is Twelty Corners. The east line is Prairie Road. I live on Briggs Hill Road. That's the east line.
Walt, if you could back away from the mic just a little bit. Thank you.
But anyway, every time they come up with a district or something like this, they always say, "Go protect the old people, the kids." They don't throw in the salmon, but sometimes they do. But I would like to be protected. I'm one of the old people. I'm 81 years old. I'm out of work. I can't just be, "Well, you know what, and my money away on stuff like this." We don't have a problem on Briggs Hill Road. When we do, we'll probably take care of it somehow. But, so the help that I, this old person, needs is being out of work. I don't have enough money to mess with this stuff. So other than that, over and out.
Ron Babjar, followed by Brett Dixon.
My name's Ron Babjar. I live off of Conrad Road, and I just have a couple of questions. I'd like to know, who's paying Rick Dancer and how much is he making? I was going to ask him how much his taxes were going up, but he doesn't live out here. The next thing I'd like to say is I think if the county commissioners would put the right priority on things, we'd have sheriffs for the whole county. We wouldn't have to be going through this here. Instead of some of their projects, they're like school districts and everything else. The first thing they do is they find out what we want, and then they say, "We're going to take that away from you if we don't give you more taxes." I'm taxed enough already.
If we can keep the applause down, please. I appreciate it. Brett Dixon, followed by Wayne Anton.
Thank you, Commissioners. My regret tonight is three minutes isn't near long enough to make the list of things that are wrong with this proposal, so I've come up with my top five, and I hope I have time. The double taxation issue of us that live in the Bethel School District or other school districts has been mentioned. The proponents of this group say, "Well, that's a problem, but we're going to work on it, but the board will solve that after we create the problems created in this district." The best way to solve a problem is not create it in the first place, and I would ask you to not create it in the first place. Number two, not in any particular order. I hear county commissioners and people working for the county complain all the time about borders and walls, and we have money to give Winnebago 100 grand, but we can't hire another deputy because of the borders and buckets of money and pots of money. We need to be working on ways to tear down walls and open up these pots so that you as commissioners can make wise decisions and not be tied, handcuffed, if you will, to use law enforcement, to the different rules. Creating a new district will create new walls, new borders, and new boundaries that will complicate the issue. I feel sorry for our poor sheriff and the budget he has to deal with. We need to find ways to break down these walls so we can make better decisions. Number three, if this passes, the residents of this district will subsidize the entire rest of the county with, Rick Dancer was mentioned, him and his neighbors in rural other end of the county will benefit because the same taxes we already pay to the county will go to the sheriff, but he won't have to worry about this section of land. He will be able to spread it out a little thicker elsewhere, and we will subsidize the rest of the county. An idea. I don't like to complain without an idea. If this is such a great idea, why don't we increase it? Take it farther. If it's a great idea, let's make the district, the boundaries, the entire county minus the cities that already have a police department. If it's such a great idea, let's go for it and do it, not make us guinea pigs in this Didn't look at my watch. This is something we can stop. Proponents are correct in saying this is not a levy. It's not a levy. It's a permanent thing. We hear them talking about, "Oh, it dissolved in five years," but yeah, it's already budgeted for 15. Something to think about. This concept started in Venida. I had heard before tonight that Venida was going to get a tax break, but I didn't believe anything so ludicrous could possibly make sense. So here we are. We're going to pay for Venida's police force. They won't have to pay extra for it.
You've got your three minutes.
Thank you.
We're not swapping time tonight. Thank you. Mr. Anton, followed by, it's like Ardell Root.
Myself, I'm 100% against this thing. Stop thinking about the tax increases you're getting. The state of Oregon wants to raise your electrical bills by 30%. My house, that's 40 bucks a month, and they're going to cut out your wood burning stoves so you cannot supplement your electric bill. You can't get gas out here. Again, and we're going to go to the $2 a gallon gas tax. This is an election year, so they're only going to put on a nickel. Look out next year, they're going to kick you in the ass. Property taxes, only $1.67. That's $650 a year at my house, okay? I think they ought to take, like them, increase- to take, like them, increase in my social security and use that. See how far that gets Now, I wanna go back, I wanna go back 10 years. Let's go back to the parks that they could not afford to mow, right? We're out of money. We can't afford somebody to mow the lawns. They get their tax increase, all of a sudden, we have six park cops, right? Six park cops. Each one of them's got a pickup. They work 12 months a year. The parks are open for six. Little bit of a waste there. That's all I got to say on this.
Please hold your applause. So, I believe it's, I'm sort of guessing, 'cause the writing's over, is it Ardell Root? The last name is Root, R-O-O-T? Yeah. If you wanna come on up and state your name for the record, seeing I butchered it. And Danny, followed by Danny Worth.
It's been a long time since I've been a speaker. I don't do this very often, but sitting here and listening to everything that you have heard, I have heard, takes me back to when I was a mother of two children for 16-years and living and going to school, working three jobs, and taking care of myself, and I had taxes to pay and everything. I had friends that would say, "I can't believe how much your taxes are. Doesn't that make you mad?" No, it didn't, because I was not only helping myself, I was helping the seniors and the children, and that's the children that are now, a lot of them, standing up here, those ages. My children will be doing the same thing, and my grandchildren, and I find it is appalling that us seniors seem to think that we've done all we can do and we don't have to do anymore. And I don't believe it has to do with whether you live in this little town or that little town or anywhere. God wanted us to love everybody, and he wanted us to take care of each other. Every city, every village takes care of the families and the children, and I support this. I am a supporter where you can help other people.
Please, no applause on the other side either. Danny Worth, followed by Karen McKenzie.
Hi, I'm Danny Worth, and I live on the other side of Nottai, and I don't think this is ever gonna happen, that this is gonna pass. I wanna congratulate the city of Veneta on their new Veneta City Police Department that'll, that'll join in and help out whenever there's, somebody's on vacation or training or whatever they're talking about. I moved here 60, in 1964, we moved out in the country to get away from this crap, because we lived in Los Angeles area, and then I lived in the Santa Clara area, right in the beginning in 1960s, when they were trying to annex Santa Clara into Eugene. And now they've got it set up where anybody makes an improvement on their property in the city of Santa Clara, they then become a Eugene resident and have to pay Eugene taxes. I live out on the other side of Nottai. This isn't gonna mean anything for me. I don't want this. I don't wanna have anything to do with it. Talk about the crime in Veneta, you're right. It's horrible. My wife went there to fix a wedding dress for our daughter-in-law. She needed a long table that my mother-in-law had, and she pulled up, and her mother-in-law was supposed to be gone to church. She wasn't gone yet, so she pulled up on the wrong side, went in and told her, "Mom, I'm here." She backed out, she went outside, and there was a ticket on her window for parking backwards on the street. How dare my wife do that? Crime is terrible in Veneta. Let's stop it.
Karen McKenzie, followed by Judy Templeton.
My name is Karen McKenzie, and I have lived in Veneta for 12-years. I'm here tonight because I am weary of the crimes that occur in the Veneta area. From extension cords getting stolen from our outdoor Christmas lights, to businesses being broke into and ransacked, vehicles being stolen by brazen criminals in broad daylight. On my way to work, I frequently see various acts of vandalism, such as mailboxes being torn off their posts, and other destruction of property that has occurred during the night. I am weary of people stating that the sheriff's department isn't doing anything about crime. I have been evicted of crime at my home, and when I made the call to 911, I got the same message that others have heard. There isn't a deputy on duty. I can't even begin to verbalize how helpless I felt. However, I realize that one deputy on duty for 20-hours of the day isn't enough manpower to respond to every call in the city of Veneta, let alone actively follow-up on crimes such as minors in possession, gas being siphoned, or petty thefts. Whether or not every call gets responded to or every crime gets investigated, isn't their fault. It's our fault as taxpayers. The Lane County Sheriff's Office is understaffed and underfunded. We, as taxpayers, can change this for the Fernridge area if the Board of Commissioners would place this on the initiative on the May ballot and allow the taxpayers to vote. Thank you.
Judy Templeton, followed by Tressa Miller.
I was at the earlier hearing and spoke against this proposal, as I feel it's an immature proposal. It has been rushed through. I feel that other things are happening in the county. In fact, just this evening's news indicated that Serenick Lane was enlarging their facility for drug treatment, more beds for treatment of those that have reached disaster state. I also am aware that we're still wrestling with taxation of the marijuana issue, and that perhaps those taxes, a good portion of those will go to the school districts. There is a school resource officer still included in this program. My take on this is that the schools probably will be receiving money from the marijuana tax issue and therefore could buy their own school resource officer. If not that, go get a grant like other school districts do. I feel that the authority of this proposed district is a little faded and foggy. Where are these advisors coming from? Where is the budget committee coming from? I vote for one commissioner and one sheriff. Where do these other people come from? Are they appointed? Do they really represent me? I live in El Myra, post office area. I'm actually in a rural area, a rural old subdivision. This last week, I was a victim of a crime, a petty crime. A garden cart disappeared while I was inside my house. Would I expect any service from the sheriff over this? No. I filled out the form, explained my loss, and I don't expect to have any action, and it probably was my own fault. I was perfectly safe. I heard my alarms ring. So, I really don't think that the donation of my taxes are going to enrich my life and health. I will probably just be making a donation, and how the accountability of this proposed district, if it should be successful, is resolved, I'm questioning. I feel we are being fed a line.
Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Tressa Miller, followed by Casey Duval.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Tressa Miller. I'm here both as a citizen and as a member of Lane Fire Authority. The official position of the district is supportive of the community policing district, and I would encourage you, gentlemen, to put that on the ballot and let the informed voters make their own decisions. The lack of law enforcement out there, especially during what is commonly known as the blackout hours, has negatively affected our ability to provide prompt service. We're staged when the scene is not safe, so we are forced to wait for law enforcement to arrive. If there's no deputies on duty and it's a hostile situation or a potentially hostile situation, we're not gonna go in. We can't help the people that we would like to go in and help. Myself as a citizen, I've been the victim of a crime. I know how frustrating it is not to have a deputy to respond, and I also know that having a deputy available to patrol the area is a deterrent, much like the neighborhood watch. Being out there saturating areas where there's a known problem, it is a deterrent. It's like leaving the kids alone with nobody to watch them. Can you expect them to make the best decision? Can you leave your dogs at home and expect them not to get into the trash? The good ones, yes. Sheriff's Department is not worried about the good people. It's the bad people out there that negatively affect all of us. So, again, gentlemen, I hope that you do put this on the ballot and let the informed voters make their appropriate decision. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Casey Duval, followed by Jim Carlin.
My name's Casey Duval. I live out north of, kinda northeast or northwest of El Myra. I don't support this measure. I don't think it's gonna do that much good with the amount of area that they're trying to encompass with the few officers that they are and the cost of it. I don't really feel that the cost is worth the service that will be provided. I don't really agree with having a school resource officer. I can understand the thought of the need of it, but I don't see that a full-time officer within the schools that's gonna stay within the Veneta, El Myra, and Crow area pretty much all the time is gonna help that much. I mean, having the police presence there isn't going to affect much of what happens in the school. There's not that much bad stuff that happens in a school. It happens occasionally, but then there's officers that can respond to those cases that need taken care of individually. We don't need a cop at the schools at all times. A lot of the stuff that I had kinda planned on saying, there's several people that covered a lot of those points very well. Don't really need to take care of them again. Anyways, I do not support this, and I hope people vote the way that they feel it fits. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Lewis, followed by Dave Cordell. Oh, hold it. Sorry, Jim Carlin. Sorry. Sorry, Jim first, then Al. Sorry. I jumped ahead.
Thanks, everyone. A lot that I have to say has already been said, but the point that I personally would probably like to make is, I'm retired, and I live on a limited income, like a lot of you folks out here, probably most of you, and I live in a 1,700-square-foot house, and my last tax bill was just a hair under $4,000 for the year. And that's in El Myra, by the way. Did I tell you that? Which is the county. And that's a lot. The last two raises that we had, or three, I guess, two for the library I voted for. My kids have been grown and gone for probably the last 14-years, but I still care about my community. I care about that library. I care about our wonderful schools that my daughter-in-law taught three of them. I care about that. So, I supported the library twice, and probably the school a couple of times. But this last big deal that the school had, now was a lot of money, but I went for it. I says, "We need to do this. Our schools are getting run down. We need to do it." Okay, now, because of all that and things, 1,700-square-foot house, my taxes right at $4,000 a year. My other point here is that you might say, "Well, you gotta have property, because that's a lot of money for that small of a house." I do. I have six and a half acres, and of course, I pay taxes on that. But the thing that I think that some people in Veneta are probably not realizing is, they don't all have five acres plus, like we do in these other communities. All of them, Alvedore, Crow, on and on and on. We all have acreages. Therefore, we pay taxes on those acreages. I don't know about all of Veneta, but I do know that they built a whole lot of houses in the last few years on small little pieces of property, and those houses are not real top of the line. So, it's easy for them to pay their taxes. I don't think hardly any of them, if at all, are paying $4,000 a year. So, I, besides the fact that they're probably not retired, as I, I think they're probably, I think they might be having a hard time realizing the difference here. Easy for you to say, the cliche goes, but for me, and a lot of you folks, it's not that easy. You know, like somebody mentioned, "Take that out of my next, or my last social security raise." Well, we didn't get one, and we haven't gotten any, and we probably won't get any. So, where is all this gonna come from, you know? I realize the fact that, yes, we need a little more police. I'm okay with that. But the thing that really kinda makes me question it is, I think it's an overkill. I mean, how many sheriffs do they want? And a supervisor, and blah, 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 goes on and on. And when I first heard about this, I thought, "This is a good idea." I tried to talk to that sheriff down in Veneta one time for a simple question about operating-
Your three minutes is up, Jim. Thank you.
Am I done?
Yeah.
And I didn't get an answer, because I live in El Myra. So, anyway, thank you.
Now, Al, followed by Dave Cordell.
I am Al Lewis. I live at Central. I have a little, about 24 acres, so my property value is up there, and of my $8,000 a year that I'm already paying in taxes, this is gonna raise my taxes over $500 a year. I'm retired on social security and, like the other people, not getting a raise this year, even $5, let alone 500. I'm opposed to this. It's double taxation, and there's a lot more people within the city limits of Veneta and El Myra than there are in these larger, more expensive places out in the county where I live, so it's disproportionate.
So, Dave Cordell, please hold your applause. Dave Cordell-
That's me.
Followed by Jim Temple, and we have only finished two out of seven sheets so far, so please hold your applause. Please limit yourself timewise if you can.
I'm Dave Cordell. I did a survey with my neighbors and everything. The biggest problem that people have with this here is their taxes are too high right now. I took a survey, haven't found one person for this. I want you to people to remember, when you vote for this, you think about the retired people, because they don't have extra income for this. So, think about it. But I think it's, I'm against it. Everybody's against it, as far as I know. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. My name is Jim Temple. I live on the other side of Nottai. I spoke at the very small other meeting with a lot of other points. Today, I'm gonna make one point, and I learned it tonight, and I think it's really significant in the issue of who's gonna pay for this. Veneta has decided that the people in Veneta don't have to pay for it. They're getting a $1.67 reduction in their taxes. Now, if the commissioners can figure out a way to give me a $1.67 reduction per thousand in my taxes, you know what? I'll vote for it. So, it's in your ball.
We'll be here all night if you keep applauding. After we finish the public hearing, we still got business to take care of, so Dick Davis,
I'm Dick Davis, and I live over clear on the very far side- I'm Dick Davis and I live over clear on the very far side of the district. I'm in the Bethel district actually and technically I guess you call it Elvador, but that's three miles away. I'm 12 miles from Veneta and we talked about five acres or whatever. I happen to have approximately 90 acres and all the farm buildings that go with it. I pay a lot of taxes. This little deal that we're going to donate to Veneta is going to cost me over $600 a year. I can't afford it. I'm 84 years old, try and still work in a farm. I don't think it's a very good idea. I will point out that I think the county commissioners got a very good message tonight and I hope they take it to heart. If they can say no, they can use that hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're going to have to spend to set this up and maybe hire another deputy and help all of us. Thank you very much.
Gino, followed by Chris Buchanan.
Well, you heard the pros and cons. It's all about money. Is it your life worth it to have the extra protection? Period.
Chris Buchanan, followed by Patricia Turley.
Right off the get-go, I'm going to tell you, I'm against this. I'm a county resident. We live just outside of Veneta's sphere of influence, if you will. I was a rescue lieutenant, paramedic in another county. I have an idea what's going on, I think. And I've often wondered why this big city of Veneta doesn't have its own police department? Why? And why is the county involved in this? Why are you guys getting involved in something that Maricandra and the city council should deal with on their own instead of putting a test on us? It's unfair. I'm on social security. I'm not drawing anything from the fire department. We have a neighborhood watch in our area. When anybody leaves our area, we let our neighbors know and we watch over each other. And I know the sheriff will be there if we need him. If not, I'll just tell them there's shots fired. Guess what? They'll be there. They'll be there fast. And they'll say, "Well, nobody saw anything." And I'll say, "Yeah, but when I called earlier, you said you didn't have anybody available." Funny how that happened, huh? So I'm going to say no. I understand the city of Veneta has a problem. That's their problem. It's not the county's problem. And I would beg you gentlemen, please reconsider. My dad was a county commissioner in another county for eight years and he strongly opposed taxes. And all we've heard from you guys are taxes. Phase two, please. Mr. Vazovic, please. Sid Lichen, please. Sars, please. Listen to the people. Listen to the people. Create a police department inside the city of Veneta. Let them do their own. Thank you.
I'm setting the timer for two minutes from now on because we're going to have to move through the-
Aw, come on!
I'm sorry. I just, as I'm looking at time, I've got staff here-
My accountant hates it when I say this, but taxes are the price we pay for civilization. That's an Oliver Wendell Holmes paraphrase. But this is a bad tax. This is a bad levy. This is a bad idea. I do have some questions. I came here thinking I might be swayed one way or the other, but I haven't heard anything that would change it. I've lived in the district, in the proposed district for 30 years. I sat on the city council of Veneta for two years in the 70s. And I taught for, combined three decades in Fernridge and Junction City schools. The way I looked at the map, it looked like children within the proposed taxing district attend Eugene, Crow, Fernridge, Bethel and Junction City schools. I'd like to know how one resource officer is going to service all of those children. Little territorial elementary out here lies entirely within the taxing district. And Jim Hale made the point in the register guard comment section today that this is not a bad idea to improve the policing in Lane County, but it needs to be a Lane County measure. You guys need to sell it and I think there are some people in this room that would help you do that. Thank you.
Liz Killian, followed by Anthony Clemmons.
Dead giveaway. Oh, no, it won't be that bad. My name's Liz Killian. Thank you commissioners for coming out to our neck of the woods so they didn't have to travel into town for this. I am in support of the proposed Fernridge policing district that is hopefully headed to the ballot in May. I've lived in the Fernridge area for nearly 20 years. I've been in Elvador, Crow and yes, now inside the city of Veneta. However, I'm headed back out into the boonies again. I'm a local citizen. I work for the sheriff's office, full disclosure. I'm an employee there. I volunteer for the neighborhood watch. I have a child in the local school district and I have been working with the citizens team that's creating this policing district, which by the way, we've been working on for over a year. It's been well thought out. It's not something that we just work up one day and decide, "Let's do this." I have a well-rounded perspective of local crime as a citizen, as a professional and as a volunteer for the neighborhood watch and as a mom. I like the idea of deciding what my police force is going to look like and choose what I will pay for and what I will not pay for, like you will if you vote, because I don't want the government deciding how I'm going to spend my money for that. The Fernridge area is unique geographically. There's one incorporated city of Veneta surrounded by several unincorporated sister communities, Nottai, Walton, Crow, Elmira, Elvador. These sister cities share local resources, schools, businesses, special events, the love of rural Lane County. That's why we're here. Unfortunately, we also share crime problems, drug addiction, domestic violence, dangerous highways, inadequate policing for the safety within our rural communities. The incorporated city of Veneta has the fiscal ability to contract with the sheriff's office for an enhanced policing district. We've been doing it for many years. But no, they've evaluated it. They cannot afford their own police force. They can't. That's why they contract with the sheriff's office.
Liz, that's your two minutes.
With a policing district, all these communities can come together to increase the level of service because what crime happens in Veneta happens in your community as well.
Last, thanks. Sorry. So Anthony Clemmons, followed by Ed Meyer.
Hello, my name is Anthony Clemmons and thank you for having this forum here, first of all. And I wish you could give me three minutes to tell them I'm going to speak fast. I want to speak about the policing district proposal, which includes the city of Veneta and its involvement, specific recommendations that I have for the creators of the policing and misconceptions around the tax issue. One big misconception is that the people outside of the city is going to get an increase and insiders are going to get a decrease. That's not true. You need to look at it, right now outside of the city doesn't have a tax, doesn't have a police thing. Inside the city, we're paying $2.93 for what we have now. The new policing district means that this contract is going to go away. So we start out with no one is going to have a policing. Outside of the city is going to pay $1.67 for that. Inside the city is going to pay $1.67 for that. So that's the first misconception. We're not paying more, we're all paying the same. All right. The next one, the next one has to, it has to do with the, it has to do with the decrease. $2.93 is what we, the people in the city of Veneta is paying and the new contract is a $1.67. You subtract those two, if you do it the way with the contract, it's a $0.27 savings. And the words for that $0.27 is tax rollback and enhanced services, which involves both the city and the policing district. To me, those are colorful euphemisms for words for keeping our tax money. City of Veneta is detailing where the cost of these savings would be allocated. That means they've already decided to keep our money. They just want to know where to sit, where to put it. The TUF is one place, municipal courts and code courts is another, and the remaining nominee that we save goes to the parks and recreation. The TUF was separate, but they delayed it. So what you have to do is TUF is going to be $36 a year start out. So you convert that to $1,000 per unit, $1,000 for assessed value. That's going to be 18 cents. Okay, the remaining, the municipal courts and code fund was addressed in October and the city council said that's not a big issue. We won't worry about that a lot. But what I did was 18 cents for the, for the TUF. This thing that wasn't a big deal, I put in 10 cents per thousand just to make some money for it. The parks and recreation, I think this might be less than keeping the roads, but I put in 20 cents per thousand. That comes out to, that comes out to 48 cents per thousand for that. But what I did was we're in the city, we want to be firm. Okay, so I add in a point, 25 cents per thousand just for miscellaneous. Okay, so what that comes down to is that's 73 cents.
It's time, Anthony. Thanks.
Okay, as is written, as is written right now, I'm against it. But if they reduce it to $1 maybe and just take it down to just the 24-hour patrol, which we take it down, that's what I do.
Can we have a little order, folks, please, so folks can hear the speaker?
My name is Ed Meyer and I live outside of Veneta. I'm in favor of the Fernridge policing district. How many times do you look at your taxes and are disgusted where your money is spent? If you're like me, it's often. Why would I want to vote or in my case, add a new tax? To me, it's pretty simple. This area is ripe for crime. We have a limited policing presence and with minor observation, a criminal will know the times that we have coverage. This new tax will allow a formidable policing presence with minimal investment. For a homeowner of a price value of around $200,000, the cost is roughly a buck a day. That's a buck a day for peace of mind. And I'm sure some people pay more. For roughly two to four cups of coffee a week, we'll have regular patrols and two officers ready to lend a hand. Are you tired of the first things to be cut in a budget reduction are public safety? This will eliminate that problem for our community. It's a win-win in my mind. 24-hour day policing presence, secure jobs that will be our deputies, plus knowing how the money is being spent by independent auditors. Let's grab this bull by the horn, blaze a path that will allow us a safe and secure community. Thank you.
Ron Short, followed by Greg Adams. Is Ron Short still here? Then Greg Adams, followed by Becky Lemler.
My name is Greg Adams. I live in the Sky Ridge neighborhood off of Bricks Hill. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm kind of disturbed that the Crow group is representing themselves as a political action committee because they are not one yet. I think that misrepresenting themselves is something they're not. I think that's a little dishonest. We've heard about the taxes. The Veneta Police District currently is charging $3.40 per thousand. That will be reduced to $1.67, so they're getting a tax cut of $1.63 per thousand dollars that their properties are worth, which means that we are all going to be picking up the tab for the city of Veneta. And that doesn't really make sense that we should all pay for Veneta to have police department that will be centered in Veneta. There will be, it's already been said that the police department or the police office will be in Veneta. I live 17.2 miles from here and I don't know how any response time could be, what was said earlier, 10 minutes with the proposed district? 10 minutes to get to my house? There's no way. I don't care how fast they can drive, you can't get to my house in 10 minutes. There's just not a chance. The group that's proposed this and is, the proponents of this group, they sent a letter to the mayor recently about this, but when they're getting it set up. And to quote that letter, "The decisions we make regarding public safety moving forward will shape our ability to deal with continued growth and livability for all Veneta residents, both current and future." So this whole plan was set up to benefit the city of Veneta and all of the proponents that are supporting it-
Thank you, Greg. That's your time.
Okay. My last point is that I've been keeping a tally. 20 people in here have said they don't want it. Six. Six people have said that they do.
Greg, thank you.
So you are responsible-
Your time's up, Greg. Thank you. Becky Lemler, followed by Ken Hamilton.
Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. I looked on the website to see what the agenda was and one of your paperworks that talks over the background and implications of this action states that this is being done due to the loss of general fund revenues to support public safety services within Lane County in large part due to the changes in federal timber harvest practices, et cetera. I would like to thank the commissioners for joining and supporting the Lynn County class action lawsuit to bring these monies back to our county, along with, I've discovered, a federal lawsuit also. This will help us a lot, getting our monies back. I heard someone earlier say that our money is gone from the timber. That is not the way that we are going to get it back with that kind of an attitude. We have to let our representatives know that we want it back and stop just pushing it under the rug. This tax proposal for this district is just plain too expensive. There are at least eight foreclosed homes in Elmira right now. Fortunately for me, mine is not one of those. If this property tax is established, how many of our neighbors is going to end up on that list? The legislature, right now, is in their short session and they are trying to repeal the constitutional limits of property taxes. If this goes through, our property taxes will skyrocket another 40%, creating even more foreclosures in this area. And I would like to refute a statement made by Karen Reister this, earlier tonight, saying that there are no corporations involved. There is a corporation involved called Citizens for Fernridge Community Policing District. It was formed just three months ago. I implore you to vote no on putting this on the ballot. Thank you.
My name is Ken Hamilton and echoing what many people have said tonight, I have a Junction City address. I have a Junction City phone number. I paid Junction City school taxes. I served on the Junction City School Board. And so why do I hear Veneta, Veneta, Veneta tonight when I live almost 15 miles from Veneta? It just doesn't make sense to me. And if this does pass, I fully intend to vote no and I fully intend to campaign as hard as I can to get other people to vote no. Just two thoughts to leave you with. One, public safety, I just looked it up before I came, had a budget of, in excess of $70 million last year. 272.5 FTE, I believe, in the Department of Public Safety. Is that the best they can do for the sheriff's department with $70 million? And the other thing that I read in the register guard the other day is, and I don't know how accurate this is, is that the county in their budgeting process is looking at removing general fund dollars- dollars from the Sheriff's Department after we voted in a public safety levy to keep people in jail. So I'm just going to leave you with those two thoughts. Thank you very much.
Please hold your applause. We have Iris Quitta, followed by Deborah Freeman.
I do live in, within Veneta. I want to say a couple of things. First of all, the commissioners are simply going to vote whether this goes on the ballot or not, so everybody gets a chance to vote with their, with their hands, or whatever, at voting time. So it's, decision is not being made today whether this passes or not. You, you make the decision. I subscribe to the broken windows approach to law enforcement. I say you go after the little stuff before the little stuff becomes the big stuff. And with increased law enforcement, we collectively have the opportunity to get ahead of a problem that's only going to become a bigger problem. I also hear people say that we take care of ourselves, we take care of our neighbors. Crime doesn't happen in the daytime. I don't think everybody can take care of their neighbors. I said this at a former public meeting, I'm very concerned about people self-policing. I think that is a job that is left to appropriate law enforcement. I also feel that this plan will help get the criminals off the street and leave them off the street. And that's, vote yes.
Deborah Freeman, followed by Gary Jenkins.
I'm for this proposed plan, at least. Get it on the ballot, we can all vote, and everybody has a chance to have their say.
Again, I'll ask people to hold their applause. Gary Jenkins, followed by Patty King.
Hi, I'm Gary Jenkins. I'm from Veneta, actually from Fern Ridge area, but I appreciate the commissioners coming out here. I can't believe you guys made it all the way out here. It was very nice of you to come into the community that it actually affects, rather than Eugene. And also, I think that everybody feels that we have a safe community. I just looked at the State of the City address here that the mayor made recently in Veneta, saying that we had a safe city. The children tell them that we have a safe city, and how wonderful it is to have a safe home and friendly people at their homes, in their schools, their library. My taxes already are outrageous. You know, I don't, I'm not so much against taxes as much as I'm against what this is for. We have a very safe community, I think. We have a very open community, and we have, you know, the Sheriff's Department out here doing all their fine work. I commend them for all the work that they do. We can't, my taxes, I pay over twenty-four-hundred dollars a year in my taxes, and twelve of it, twelve-hundred dollars of it, half, over half of it goes to the school district. I mean, and the other half goes to the library, and then a little bit of governmental issues. The main concern that Veneta has is to get their parks in order. I mean, for, you know, come on, really? The parks are great, no doubt about that. But if crime is a problem, which, you know, maybe it is in Veneta, I don't know, it seems to me, as I read in the, in the State of the City, that the main problem is juveniles down at the skating park smoking cigarettes. And that doesn't make major crime. There may be some drugs, I don't know. You know, I, you know, certainly there's homeless people, but, and that's going to go around, but I've never seen any, any issues with it necessarily. And I'm just, I'm against the tax. I think that it's, you know, it's, it's been brought too premature, actually. It's too premature. So, thank you for your time.
So Patty King, followed by Rich Hackett.
Yes, I am Patty King, and I probably won't need this microphone. I never had to use one before. I am from Alvador, and from the inception of that two-minute or two-hours that we found out that there was going to be a meeting in Alvador, that we, people rallied around and got people to the fire station, in zig time, I want to tell you, till right now, I am against this thing with everything that's in me. I don't think it's right that Veneta gets to have their taxes lowered and we get to get ours raised. Wow, good for you, Veneta. And, and talking of crime, Veneta has crime, Eugene has crime. How much crime have you read and heard about in Eugene? How many police officers did the city of Eugene have? And they can't control their crime with that amount? And we know it's a lot. I want you to also look around here, commissioners. Ninety percent of these people are senior citizens. We're on fixed incomes. We cannot afford to pay another hundred dollars a year in taxes, let alone two, three, four, five, and as high as six. Probably have to go back and do some recounting again, because that's probably not quite correct. There's probably more than that. Most of you, from the Alvador area, I know, and I know what taxes you pay. This is not right. You, you got a good idea established, but let's go further with it. I want to see Rick Dancer's area start at first, and let's see how it goes up there. And if it works up at Rick's place, then we might consider it. Probably not, but anyway. Thank you for coming. Thank you for finding out where this area is at, because I'm sure some of you found it for the first time. And also, Mr. Stewart, thank you for paying attention. The other three, not so much.
Rich Hackett, followed by Herb Bloobman.
My name is Rich Hackett. I have some property over in the Bethel area, and I have property out there, and I'm opposed to this in both places. But that doesn't mean that, I'm not opposed to the Sheriff's Department, they're wonderful people, I wish we had a lot more of them. Thing is all about taxes. You know, my taxes, I've had a place out here fifty years, my property tax went from ninety to five thousand. The thing is, I, you question, I've heard that in Veneta, there's a lot of public housing, St. Vincent de Paul and other government properties. I've heard that they don't pay any land taxes. Is that correct? I'm talking units. Is that correct? You don't know, or you don't think? Public area?
You know, I'm not sure. It depends on-
Well, see, that's the deal. If you're not sure, we need to be sure. Nonprofits, no. Nonprofits, he says, do not pay land taxes. So we've got maybe four or five hundred voters over there that can vote on our taxes, and yet that land is not generating any taxes to fund the Law Protection Agency. Another thing we've got to realize, looking at the budget for this levy, it'll go up a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars every year. Within three years, it's proposed to cost three million. That's the way I read it. Now, another thing you want to remember is, we have a levy on per thousand dollars of valuation of your property. You know what your property's done in the last ten years. Valuation's gone up. It's going to continue to do that, so your taxes are going to go right on up with it. So if we could figure out a better way to finance the police, or Sheriff's Department, I'm all for it. I don't want to see any of these deputies out there driving around by themselves at night, way out in the sticks. Where I live, I'll be dead before they get there anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett.
They're so far up on the road that they'll never get there in time to save me, but-
Rich, your time's up.
Anyway, I'm going to vote against it, and I'd sure like to urge you guys to vote against it, too.
Herb Bloobman, followed by Stephen Perak.
Good evening. I'm Herb Bloobman. I'd like to thank the commissioners for hosting the meeting. And I also sit as a citizen member on the Lane County Budget Committee, along with the commissioners and other representatives, other citizen members. And I will say this, I think that the commissioners and county staff has done almost everything, everything, everything that we could come up with, everything they could come up with, to be able to figure out how to adequately fund public safety. And the options just aren't there. I've seen it. I, I applaud the fact that everybody's come out to this. It's opened to great conversations. The proponents brought the issue forward as an idea that we can all consider. Of what I've seen, if we want to have enhanced policing above what we have right now, this is a viable option. There's no guarantee that next year you're going to see the same services from the current, from the sheriff, as you see now. This option provides you a guarantee of basically determine your own fate. I, I value everybody's opinion. I've listened to everybody. I think that there's some very good points on all sides of this, and it puts the power in your hands as a voter to determine whether you want to pay for public safety and determine what that public safety looks like, or whether to revert back to the default option. Thank you, gentlemen.
Stephen Perak, followed by Paula Jos-
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Perak, and I'm from the unincorporated area of Alvador. I spoke at the last meeting, and my position was neutral, but leaning against at the time. When I spoke, I had some questions about who brought the proposal forward, about the school resource officers, despite the fact that I'm in Bethel, and about the equity of patrol in my neighborhood. I wanted to thank you guys for answering a lot of those questions. They were brought up at the end of the meeting, and I want to let everybody know that I've changed my mind. I've learned that we won't have to pay for the resource officer. People in Bethel will have their amount decreased, so that they don't have to pay it directly. I've also learned that there's the proposed sunset. I am okay with the county having the ability to extend that, if it's been proven to be a positive thing for us. I also wanted to add that I heard some things about the countywide measure. If we wanted to extend the services to the entire county, would have to involve the cities of Eugene and Springfield, which would make that pass, the ability to pass that measure extremely difficult. I don't understand the complaints about subsidizing Veneta, to be honest. I've actually done some research on it and some soul-searching, and Veneta's already paying for police. What they're talking about is shifting the money that they're currently paying the Sheriff's Department to cover what we are going to be able to get. So their money plus the money that we have is actually going to lead to a direct benefit for us. The money that they're paying is going to the Sheriff's Department, which clearly isn't providing the level of services that we want. I do have some questions about whether or not we're going to have equitable service in Alvador, whether or not we're going to see patrols and the amount of service in Alvador. But I'm concerned about crime. I'm concerned about if our house was vandalized or something happened to us, having to work with my wife and my children to make them feel safe in a home that they're supposed to feel safe in, frankly. Do I think that this proposal is going to solve crime? Absolutely not. I'm a realist. But I do think it will help determine, deter some of that. Anyway, I know I'm done. I just wanted to say, I really hope that this goes to a moat, so that people get a chance to weigh in at the ballot box, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Jos, followed by Jean Cook.
Hi, I'm Paula Jeanette Josie. I live in Elmira. And first, I'd like to say I'm opposed to this. As other people indicated, there's a lot of retirees in my neighborhood also. We have a lot of low and middle-income individuals. I haven't heard any working-class people say that they've got sufficient raises in the last couple of years. As you know, Medicare, there was a zero inflation rate. If you're new to, I mean, Social Security, if you're new to Medicare, you have a higher premium rate. And also, as that other gentleman and a couple others have pointed out, is what you're going to pay for this, this year, as your property increases in value, which is a good thing, also, this initiative is going to increase in cost. So I guess I'd really like the commissioners to seriously consider the financial burden this is going to put on retirees and other people who don't have a high income level. Also, if anybody has currently been fortunate enough to get a new remote meter through Latchley Lane, you know you've seen a twenty-five percent increase in your kilowatts per hour, which is another issue we're trying to resolve. And then I guess, I, this is the first meeting I've been to, and one of my major questions is, it sounds like these officers would be hired by this district. If there's a lawsuit, who pays for any damages that are awarded to a claimant? Is that costed out through Lane County as a whole? Or do the citizens here under this district have to then pay additional costs for any lawsuits? Or any increase in insurance premiums? And we all know, we've heard about the most current lawsuit that happened out of Crow Road.
Thank you, Paula. Your, your time's up. Jean Cook, followed by Patty Milligan.
Yeah, my name's Jean Cook, and I am definitely against this. We live up a long county road, and I don't think we're going to have anyone come up there, vandalize us, because we can't get it taken care of. And I, another question is, all these new homes that are going in in Veneta, the taxes got to be going up. Where's that money going? I mean, why, why not keep it in Veneta? Leave us alone. Our taxes are plenty high enough, and some of us would like to retire and, you know, not have, keep working and pay taxes for Veneta.
So, thank you. Patty Milligan, followed by Rod Cooper. Patty Milligan still here? We'll move on. And then Rod Cooper, followed by Brad Lilly.
First of all, I'd just like to say, I don't want to say anything disparaging to the officers, because I know they've got a tough job to do, and we appreciate them. But as far as the ETA of them arriving, if it's going to go up from thirty minutes to fifty minutes to my house, they're still ten minutes too late. It ought to be taken care of. Second of all, I've been there for thirty-nine years and haven't had a problem, except for one time. The county fair goer decided to camp in my driveway, and seven o'clock in the morning, I discovered that camper, and I walked out with my shotgun and tapped on the window, and fifteen seconds later, they were gone. So the next thing I want to talk about is a taxing authority. Anytime you establish a new taxing authority, you're going to have mission creep. First of all, it's bare bones, because we don't want to pay the taxes, and then we need a building, and then we need a jail, and then we need programs, and then we need I think our money would be better spent to catch the kid that stole the heart out of the garden, throw, take him down to the jail and say it's thirty days with a thousand dollars bail, and when the parents or relatives or somebody feel sorry enough to get him out, he'll think twice about going and stealing somebody else's garden implement. In other words, get tougher on the criminals. You got to realize, there is a limited number of criminals. There's a limited number, man. Let's just get them, throw them in the clink, make them pay the fine, make them do their time, and I think it'll start cleaning up a lot of the monkey business. That'd be a better, a better spend nature of our money. So, oh, one other thing. Portland and Eugene and a few other big cities in the state run the state. We've figured that out, haven't we? We're not really properly represented, us rural people.
Rod, your time.
Last thing. Buck seventy.
Brad, Brad Lilly, followed by Bob Crambleit.
Hello, my name's Brad, and I live in the outlying area of Veneta. I'm a hundred percent for the, the Policing District. I'm also paying, well, I have approximately nine hundred bucks that it's going to cost us personally to, to get this, but I think it's worth it. I think the, the twenty-four-hour coverage- to, to get this, but I think it's worth it, I think the, the 24-hour coverage, the backup if we need it, to help either the other officers or the fire depart, excuse me, the fire department, along with the resource officer in the school. I hear a lot of people, you know, talking about the, the crime on outlying areas not being that bad, but like some of the others said, being part of the crime watch, being on the neighborhood watch and the patrol, I think we have a lot more insight as far as what's public into what actually happens. There's not really a day that goes by that we don't get some kind of message or request to go check out a certain area, things like that. There's no corporations involved as far as what somebody said about the, the PAC, that's just something you have to create to be able to take donations, so it's not an actual corporation or a thing of itself, it's just a way to get donations. So, that was created by us, so it wasn't, you know, an outside corporation. As far as Venida, I, I don't, I think I already said I don't even live in Venida, but as far, as far as Venida benefiting on the backs of us in the outlying areas or people even further, I don't know how much more even you can get a dollar 67 and a dollar 67. I mean, exact cost for exact same coverage.
Brad, that's your time.
Oh, that was the time?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Cramblett, followed by Steve Cochran.
My name's Bob Cramblett, I've lived in this county for 64 years, I guess now, and I've lived in this so-called new district for 30 years. Since we're short on time, I'll start with the solution. The solution being, you could take this $167 per hundred thousand or whatever it is, which will go all the way to $600 more per year, go down to Buy Mart here and buy yourself a good 12-gauge shotgun and a box of number four or double-out buckshot, and you will be, and the best thing about it, you'll be able to get a new one each year. Now, to go back, I'm a little out of order now, but since I'm going to run out of time anyway, we'll start with this. Who, who is the one deciding the boundaries of this policing unit? Who are the one, let's see, and why are these boundaries extended from Gillespie Corners to Franklin and Globe to the, and then to Green Hill on the east side? And the answer, money. The people in Venida who want this, they want somebody else to pay for it, is the problem. And I live in Bethel School District, and why should I pay again? This time for a reserve officer for a school district that I'm not even in. Now, a lot of this has been covered, but it doesn't hurt to hear it again. If the people in Venida want more policing, then they should create their own Venida Police Department. Simple as that. Just as Junction City has one, Coburg has one, Oak Ridge, Cottage Grove, even Florence has their own police department. The fact is that you people in Venida who want this, you want somebody else to pay for it, and that's what it all comes down to. Now, these taxes, right now we pay enough for the services we get, and the problem is, is that this new tax will actually double what I pay for both Lane County and for the Lane County Public Safety. It will actually double what I pay in my taxes per year. Let's see, I understand that just setting up this district will cost a hundred thousand dollars, that's enough to fund at least one, maybe two deputies in this area. I'm sure the sheriff will have something to say of how much it costs per deputy, and he could have one even halftime. Now, if the commissioners approve this policing district, then maybe the commissioners ought to pay that hundred thousand out of their own salaries. That sounds like a fair thing.
Time's up, Bob.
Time's up?
Yep.
Sorry, you didn't let me finish. The county needs to be more.
Steve. Steve Cochran, followed by Richard Jacobson. Steve Cochran, okay. Richard Jacob, Jacobson. Richard Jacobson here. Jed Keever. Followed by Gary Lichens, it looks like.
My name is Jed Keever, I live just outside of Venida in the county. I, I'm a retired Eugene police officer, I worked for 26 and a half years in most capacities that they had. I think this is a very bad idea as far as the, the organization of, of the, the solution. Yeah, there's a problem. There are drugs, there are, is crime, and so on and so on. I just don't see, from my experience, how 10 detectives, and I don't mean to disparage the sheriff's office at all, I, I don't see how 10 deputies will solve the problem, will be out cruising doing police work. That isn't going to do it. You need to have detectives that are following up cases, that are, if you will, profiling. You get a guy that's doing drugs, you work him, you get on him and you bust him, and you do it again when they let him out. And you need to know your people, you need to know your car thieves, and I don't think this is going to work, to have a bunch of uniformed guys out. It isn't going to be practical. The schools, in my opinion, ought to buy, buy their own resource officers. They need them, they ought to have them, they're great people, they do a good job, it's a good thing. It, it shouldn't be budgeted as a police issue this, in this situation. The deputy district attorney for halftime, I can't believe that they're going to have some deputy district attorney that at noon is going to say, oh, I got my half-day done for everybody else, I'm going to work on just Venida stuff right now. Those guys are crazy overworked. They've got stacks of files all around their offices, all they're trying to do is get rid of them. I just don't see how we're going to do anything but subsidize the DA's office doing what we're doing. We need to do prevention, we need narcotics officers, we need detectives, we need people to follow up. The issue of response times, you know, if, if you're being shot at, somebody's going to get out and help you. Eugene will, the state will, somebody will come and find you and help you. I realize that it keeps being touted as lengthy response time.
Your time.
I'm done?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I think it's Gary Lichens?
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Gary Lichens, I've been out here for almost 40 years. And I do appreciate all the sheriffs and our fire department, I do feel sorry for you folks because I do feel that you are underfunded. I do oppose the tax, and here's why I oppose the tax. And maybe this has been put together, if it has been put together, it has not been given to me. I do not know how much money this tax district is going to collect, I do not know how much goes to administration fees, nobody has broke this down telling me how much is going to go to the sheriff that's on the ground, until I see that and I understand that, because I don't trust, I don't, excuse my voice, I don't trust any taxes, because here's what happens with taxes if you don't understand them. Once they get voted in, you live with them. Here's the problem is, always something happens with that tax that you didn't think was going to happen. The money gets shifted, it gets moved around, or I thought it did this, you need to understand the tax from A to Z, and then make your decision. But what I'm, I'm getting back is, is somebody needs to break this down and give it to me as a personal property owner and a business property owner in this community, so I know where that money is going and what it's going to do from A to Z with no changes. So if somebody looks me in the eye and says this is what it's going to do, that's what it better do. Thank you.
So, I have an illegible name here, but I can read the city, it was Elmira, and I think the last name might be Johnson, that was right after Gary. Anybody recognize that? Well, if we get done, I'll ask if there's anyone else that wants to talk, I'll skip this name for now because it's not readable. Paula DeFries, followed by Sandy Beal.
My name's Paula DeFries, and I live outside of Venida. My husband and I are both retired, we're on a fixed income, and I understand why people don't want to pay more taxes, but I am firmly in support of the Fernridge District. I think it's a no-brainer. We need more people, we need more policing. Here's the thing, I live on a street where we have people that are part of the neighborhood watch. Now, the thing is, is that two of these people that I know of are former retired military. They have been called out, they have been woken up in the middle of the night, one of them has had to leave work to come and address a situation that's happening because there wasn't any deputy around to help that situation out. That's not fair. I don't think it's fair. I really believe that this is something that the community needs. Nobody wants to pay more money, but the response time of being 30 minutes or more is unacceptable. The sheriff is doing everything that they can do. And if you say that a few minutes is not going to make a difference, you tell that to somebody who's been shot and is laying there bleeding out because they can't get emergency services. That's all that I have to say, thank you.
Sandy Beal, followed by Pete Jues, it looks like. Sandy here. Then Pete Jues.
He left.
He left. Mike Montgomery. We have a winner. Ivan Hernandez is on deck.
Thank you commissioners, I'm Mike Montgomery, I live in No-Tai. I'm also a career firefighter, paramedic, and I strongly support this. As a volunteer firefighter, there's nothing that's more helpless than sitting on scene, knowing that somebody's hurt, somebody's been shot, bleeding to death, you can't do anything about because you're waiting for, for law enforcement. And unless you want to do something to, you know, fix this, we're not going to increase the timber harvest, so this is the only alternative that we have. So, I would ask the commissioners to at least please put it to the voters, thank you.
So Ivan Hernandez?
That's me.
Followed by Wayne Lemler.
I was one of the people who were surveyed, so I got a phone call. At that point in time, I said no, the individual hung up, and I never had the opportunity to ask any questions, so some training needs to be done there. I also would like to say that I would have to have more transparency than what I've heard this evening for me to support this. I would need to know how we're being evaluated, what's being evaluated, what allows it to go forward, how will the money be used, will it be dedicated enough so the commissioners can't touch it for anything else but this service? I would need to know that likely improved response time actually has something to it other than just a likelihood. I don't like to live with likelihoods, I want to have absolutes. I would also like to see accountability, if the youth is doing some of these crimes in the schools, then we need a juvenile department, foster department and whatnot that truly hold these kids and their parents accountable. In the absence of that, it'd be hard for me to support this unless I had someone who explained to me how this money is going to be utilized, how it's going to be spent, how it's going to be evaluated, because in the end, you're really talking not about a dollar 67, in my case, you're talking almost $15,000 in 15 years.
Wayne Lemler, followed by Bob Eaton.
For me, this is absolutely about money. This is my tax bills for last year. Long, long, and now it wants to be added to. This is what I call a death by a thousand cuts, right here. Now, what's important to me is the bottom number, the very bottom number. Sure, there are lots of things on here worthwhile, but what do I pay? The bottom number. Right now, I pay $12.01 for the whole thing per thousand. Not the dollar 67, I pay $12.01. If this goes through, I will pay $13.68 per thousand. That's a lot of money. Now, it has been stated, and rightfully so, that the rate won't change, a dollar 67, that's wonderful. Also, Measure 50 says they can only raise our taxable property values by 3% a year. That's wonderful. Every year, I've lived there since 19, a long time, I moved here in 76, but since 1990 for Measure 5, and then 1997 for Measure 50, the legislature has been trying their best to get those measures changed. Get this, and I want you to research it, our legislature right now, in Salem, right now, they are considering SJR 201, this is for the year of 2016. This is what it will do. It is a proposed amendment to the Oregon Constitution repealing, add valorem property tax assessment provision created by the House Court Resolution 85, 1997, and ballot Measure 50 in 1997 requiring add valorem property taxes to be assessed on real market value of property. Measure 50 is what restricts the taxable value of our property by 3%, and they are considering throwing it out. So that dollar 67 would remain true, but the 3% may go away.
Wayne, that's your time on it.
Thank you sir.
Thank you. Bob Eaton, followed by Paul Martin.
Yeah, my name's Bob Eaton, and I live just down here on Gene's Road. Well, as you all well know, here a month ago or so, big shootout. Well, I might be a hard ass, but I say if you're dealing in drugs, making drugs, I don't care, if you get shot and die out in your yard, hey, that's, that goes with the business. This money that they want to charge me is going to cost me $400 a year, and maybe a sheriff might show up in 15 minutes. Well, by the time that happens, I've already got this problem under control. For $45, you go over here and you get a concealed weapons permit, take care of all your problems. You have a light, hang a light up, get a dog, but we don't need this kind of tax, this is a joke, this is not going to help anybody but maybe a small community inside the city
Paul Martin, followed by Dennis Wazuski.
My name's Paul Martin, I live outside the city limits of Venida on some property. 31 years in law enforcement, retired, first six with the sheriff's office. I left this area because of a lack of support by the county for law enforcement. I went to Nevada for a strong law enforcement presence. I came back into this area full well knowing the lack of support in law enforcement. I will support my brothers and sisters in law enforcement, I will support this, but I'll tell the committee, I've been involved in these kind of inter-local agreements, in these kind of bond issues and so forth, you went about it the wrong way. A lot more information has to come out to the citizens of this area before you'll get any support. I spent 25 years down there, I retired as a deputy chief, I know how to go about making these things happen, it's not going to happen with what I've heard here. If Venida wants more support, you're going to have to put out calls of service so the citizens out here know, the problem with rural law enforcement is, people in the rural areas don't call, because they know somebody's not going to respond, so it doesn't come out as a call for service, so there's no way you can deal with it. We had the same issues down there with Clark County, Las Vegas, Nevada, in support, because there was a Metropolitan Police Department that both dealt with the county and the city of Las Vegas. We policed over a million people, we had the constant... We had the constant...the city didn't think they got the service. The county didn't think they got the service. So a lot more information has to come out. I'm neutral right now. I shouldn't say that, but I'm neutral. In the end, I will support law enforcement because I left this area because they didn't get support. And I hate to say it, in the thirty years I was gone, it's worse. I bet we had five or six full-time officers more back then than we have now. I can't believe it. It's unbelievable. Like I said, I came back in here full well knowing where I was moving back into. I hope you do support it, but you're going to need a lot more.
It's your time, Paul. Dennis Lesuski, followed by Brenda Russell. Is Dennis here? Is Brenda Russell here? Herman Terry, followed by Cherie Head.
Hi, my name is Herman, and I'm opposed to this. I moved here sixteen years ago. My property taxes was twelve hundred dollars. I paid four thousand dollars a year now on property taxes. So if this goes through and I have to pay another six hundred dollars, I'm on a fixed income. I get social security. I got a little bit of retirement. Six hundred dollars, we talk about homeless people. I'm one step away from it, and that's what this is going to cause, is more of this kind of stuff. I'm anti-government. Eighty percent of government should be done away with, far as I'm concerned. What you guys are asking us to do is crazy. It's just plain crazy. Yeah. If you want protection, go down and take a gun class, get a gun permit, go down to the gun place, buy yourself a gun. That's the only protection you're going to get. I've been charged in this county with being a terrorist and a racist because some guy said I called him a camel jockey. I got charged with it. Freedom of speech, you don't have. So don't...that...and...but this...I'm against it, totally against it. And I'm totally against...you guys brag at school districts. I couldn't care less about the school districts. They don't teach, they brainwash. They brainwash each other. And I...you know, you talk about the timber tax. They've known for the twenty, thirty years, the timber tax was gone. Did they prepare for it? Oh, no, we're going to get it back. You'll never get your timber tax back because the environmentalists will take care of that one for you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Cherie? Cherie Head, followed by Breeze Chanti.
I've lived in the city of Veneta for thirty-eight years. I live out on Houston Road, and yes, I do have property out on Houston Road. I have five acres. Our taxes are currently five thousand dollars a year. And when this proposal originally came, we've been robbed now three different times. I own four dogs, and yes, I have guns as well. And I was willing at the time to take on the extra dollar sixty-seven. I didn't...I never knew it was going to release me from the three dollars that I'm already paying. I was willing to pay another dollar sixty-seven to get this because I thought it was for you. But evidently, you don't want it. I want to thank the fire district for saving my grandson when I pulled him unconscious from our swimming pool. They were there. I want to thank the police department who recovered our eight hundred and fifty-dollar lawnmower that was stolen out of our yard. And I thought that you wanted more service, but if you don't, that's okay by me. I just really hope that it's not your grandchild because mine is the most precious thing to me. And it's worth every penny that I pay, and I was willing, on my five thousand dollars that I pay already, to pay another added one sixty-seven because I was willing to help the better community.
Breeze Chanti, and then Rick Dancer.
Hi, I'm Breeze Chanti, and I live outside Almyra, in the rural area. Generally, I support services for the community. But I oppose this because I feel like...well, there's a number of things I want to say about that. You know, I've been here twenty-seven years. I've seen Veneta grow, doubled size. It's brought a lot of problems. Crime is one, but congestion is another problem, pollution, deforestation. You know, they've gone very, very much into developing Veneta. Veneta is now close to forty-five hundred, forty-six hundred population. In twenty years, prognosticated ten thousand people. There'll be more crime. Why I oppose this proposal is that it's disproportionately taxes the people in the rural area. The way I see it, Veneta's imported problems, and it's exporting tax burden on the people in the rural areas. So my solution would be for Veneta to join Oak Ridge, Coburg, Junction City, form their own police district, and for us rural folks to have an increase in the sheriff's office to service our areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Dancer, and then I...that is actually our last speaker signed up, although I did skip one because I couldn't read it. And I'll take anyone that did not speak that still wishes to speak. So Mr. Dancer.
I'm Rick Dancer. Yes, I do work for the small group of people that have put this proposal together. That is who I work for, so I just want everything to be disclosed that way. Veneta will still pay a dollar sixty-seven per thousand, just like the rest of you. It's a proposal that goes district-wide. If the city decides to roll that back, they can roll that back. That decision has not been made, but they do pay that dollar sixty-seven. Portland State did a study. They looked at rural communities. Their study showed that for a city to do its own police force was not cost-effective. They suggested doing a district, which is why Junction City's looking at this, and why Crestwell's looking at this, and while the McKenzie River Valley, where I live, are also looking at this. A political action committee is not a corporation. It is a political action committee. It's filed through the Secretary of State's office, but it's not a corporation. I know, I ran for that office. Response time will increase because when you get a call and there's enough police officers out here, they drive really fast. I hear us saying that we can take care of ourselves. What about the people who can't? What happens to the community? Not just your neighborhood. I hear us say that we don't see crime. It's not happening to me. We pay a dollar ninety-eight for fire service here and never question it. I've never had a fire, but I want fire protection for me, my family, and my community. I feel the same way about police services. We say other parts of Lane County will benefit by this district, i.e. Rick Dancer and his neighbors. No, another round of budget cuts is inevitable. Just ask these guys. And I will probably have less, if any, coverage at all. You see, the sheriff's department is only required by law to serve civil papers, operate the jail, and search and rescue. Rural Patrol is an extra. It's the first to go. Right now, we have three deputies who run the whole entire county, the size of Connecticut, and that's me included. We say we want local control. This proposal gives back local control. I agree. I would like to see this turn into all of our county outside, because the cities of Eugene and Springfield will never...we've all seen this. I watched it when they covered the news. They are not going to pass any extra patrols for our area. We have to do it ourself. This is how you start. This is how you begin, and I hope that this goes to the other parts there. If you need more information, go to fernridgcpd.com. Everything people have been saying, I don't have that information. It's right there. Thank you very much.
So that's everyone I had signed up. Is there anyone here that did not get to speak that would like to speak? So if you'll come up and state your name for the record, please, and the city you're from, we'll try and roll through you real quick. You'll get your two minutes. Go for it.
Thank you. My name's Ted Fox, and I'm a resident on Pine Grove Road. I have forty-two acres and a house that we just built. We've just retired, and this is our dream house. This proposal would increase my taxes, which some people don't care about, almost nine hundred dollars a year. I did a little quick math here, which staggers me. Of the thirteen positions that are being proposed for this policing district, out of the two-point-three-nine-million-dollar annual budget, the average is one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars per employee that we will be paying under this proposal. I think I heard coming over here tonight that Peyton Manning is retiring this year. He's coming to here to apply for a deputy sheriff's position in the district. Thank you.
Just state your name and where you're from for the record.
My name is Bob Zaver. I live in Almyra, and I have an observation. I just heard about this whole thing this afternoon, and to tell you the truth, I'm still on the fence. I know that having lived up on West Demming Road for twelve years, we obviously have a public safety issue in terms of police. I know that from personal experience. We had one break-in and several rather uncomfortable situations. But I'm going to make an observation because I haven't decided one way or another. I'm still trying to track this out. There's been a lot of comments on both sides, which seem to be pretty reasonable. There's some good arguments on both sides. But there's a problem here, and I think a lot of time was wasted by people saying different...throwing different numbers around. You can have differences in emotional responses and values and judgments and what have you, but you can't make a rational decision. You can't have a rational debate if you don't agree with the numbers. And I don't know what the numbers are after sitting here. There's a basic debate that...so I'm kind of...I'm a business manager, so I have to sit back, and I do this all the time, this type of analysis. But there seems to be a camp that says this is all about Veneta screwing the rest of the county for funds, and Veneta's saying, no, it's not that way. They're going to be paying the same amount. Where are the numbers? Are the numbers published? And if so, where? And I think that has to do with how such a meeting is organized in the first place. You know, I hear accusations that there were mailings that had false information, and then I hear other things. I'm hearing all kinds of different numbers, and that should be...so let's publish the numbers that are real so everybody can evaluate. You're all looking from the same sample-st样的 comparison. That's all I'm saying. I don't know. I don't know which way to go. Thank you.
My name is David Montgomery. I live west of Nottai. I have been a resident out there for, well, about seventy-six years. I've been in the timber business. We have not addressed the real issue. I would like to see a group like this, includes educators, whatever your profession may be, address the timber issue. I'm very familiar with timber. I have a degree in forestry, which doesn't mean diddly anything, but I've also got fifty years working in it, been very familiar with the ONC Timberlands. Got two and a half million acres, ONC Timberlands, that should be producing about one-point-three-billion-feet of timber per year. Well, subtract some for streams, uh, protective areas, easily we can produce five-hundred-million-feet a year. But how many people will ever come out and be proponents of that? That's the issue. I'm not going to address anything about...I'm really a proponent of the law enforcement district, a proponent of putting it on the ballot.
My name is Angela Tripp. I came here tonight and was not going to speak, but after listening to all this, I can't help myself. I hear a lot of people coming up here saying, you know, I'm a senior, I'm on fixed income. I am a mom of two little kids. Have you guys looked at the cost of childcare lately? My husband works, and I stay home with the kids because it's not worth it for me to work. So we are a family of four on one income, so it's not easy for us either. Just because you're a senior doesn't mean you're the only one that is having a hard time paying your bills. Sorry, I made a little note here. Something needs done about the crime around here. I've lived here all my life, and it has gotten out of hand. A lot of people are saying, you know, I live in the Bethel School District, and I don't think I should have to pay for your school officers. You won't. There is going to be a reduction, so if you live in Bethel, you won't pay for our school resources. I beg you guys, look at the facts. There's a lot of people coming up here saying things that are not true about this at all. They don't know the facts. You need to look at the facts and go with that. Also, it seems to me that the people that come up here and talk, and most of the people that have shown up at this meeting tonight are all in oppose to this. There are a lot of people that support it. They just don't have...I'm not trying to sound rude, but they don't have as big a mouths. The ones that oppose it are the ones that come up here and really have something to say about it. The ones that support it are sitting at home waiting to hear what happened here tonight. So I beg you guys, put it to vote. Give everybody, everybody, not just the ones that showed up tonight, the chance to vote and make their voice heard, too.
Oh, and by the way, Rick Dancer, how much he's paid, and nobody listens?
Hello, my name is Marius Saucero. I live in the...outside of Veneta. I don't know if you...I like to think logically, but you know, marijuana commits...someone abuses it, creates crime. They're taxing the marijuana. They could use that money to stop the crime, the abusers who use it. You know, they're making book money of those taxes. They can use that money to stop the crime. And, you know, I hate to say it, you guys are lucky. I've got about twenty-five years to go to retire, you know? My property taxes keeps going every year. I've been living here for eleven years, been going up, 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 and never...haven't got a break. But like I said, you know, I'd like to see real where the money is really is going to go because most of it is...they throw numbers, but there's no accountability on the money. And that's my main concern. I've seen it a lot. Money we voted in goes away, they lose it, there goes again, do it again. That's all I have to say. But, you know, I would like you guys to talk to younger generations who needs a lot of help. They're totally in the ignorance, but, you know, I would like to see you guys help the younger generation.
Marty, could you state your last name again for the record? I couldn't hear it over the noise.
Marius Saucero.
So is there anyone else that wishes to address the board during this public hearing? If not, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to discussion with the board and deliberations. Comments from the board or discussion on the proposed formation order? Well, yeah, you guys will hold...bear with us for a minute. We're trying to bring Commissioner Farr back into the conversation. I think his cellphone battery died. We got you. Pat? Can you hear us? Great. We've closed the public hearing. I'm sorry we lost you there for a little bit.
So we're on to looking at the formation order. Questions, comments, or deliberations from the board?
Commissioner Sorenson.
So I started getting into this at the beginning of the meeting, but it looks like this is the best time. So the difference between the ballot title that we've had on the internet, county internet, the dollar sixty-seven per thousand is there. It'll generate two-point-three-nine-million dollars. The district's... The district's subject to dissolution in 2021 unless a determination of public need is... Need for continued existence is made before June 30, 2021. There's reference to expanding public safety by hiring a school resource deputy. All of that is in the revised item that's listed as revised 2/9. But it's shorter, 157. And maybe Mr. Kyler, is there anything you'd like to add to, any changes there?
Chair Bozovic, Chair Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson. I think the 175 words is actually inaccurate. That was the limit. I did change that in the revised one to reflect the actual word count. But if you recall, the 175 words is just the statutory limit that you can have in the summary. This was...what you have before you now is revised was requested by the proponents. It's simply a sort of reformatting of the information that was there. I think they felt like it read better in the new version.
Do we know how many residents there might be in the Fernridge Community Policing District? And how many registered voters might be in that proposed district?
We do know that. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Is it larger than the Fernridge Library District? Steve knows? Okay. Can you just come up there and let us know? Because I noticed that on the county website, that Fernridge Library District numbers are on the county website, just by comparison.
There are two facts that I can give you, Commissioner. The first fact is there are 8,974 pack slots inside the boundary. That population of the boundary is about 22,000. That estimate came from A&amp;T. What we do not have is how many registered voters inside.
But the population, using census data...
Approximately 22,000.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to get, you know, an estimate of whether we had broken the 1% mark tonight or not in terms of registered voters in the proposed district. Okay, so Mr. Kyler, what are the steps that you're recommending this evening?
Chairman Stewart and Commissioner Sorenson, the first item of business in front of you is finalizing the creation of the district. The second order of business is referring the matter to the county clerk for preparation for placement onto the ballot. So you finalized your second public hearing. The very next step is to discuss whether you think there's any changes needed to the design, if you will, of the district, based on what you've heard, and take the step to finalize that formation. And as I said, as long as there's a permanent rate attached to that district, it's gotta go to the voters for formation and adoption of that permanent rate. So you've got two actions that you need to do tonight if you're gonna move this along.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any other...Commissioner Lyken?
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. A couple of things. So I had a count tonight. The overwhelming testimony was opposed to, I think even the board even putting this out for a vote. Couple of...and I think what I would like to do is just lay out real quickly my personal experience. In the city of Springfield, I noticed there wasn't very many people talking about crime issues in Springfield. There's a reason for that. You come into Springfield, you do the crime, you will do the time. Because we have the largest city jail in the state of Oregon. You will do the crime, or you will do the time. But I need to...this is very important. I think this is where we are a little bit tonight. This may be an issue where things are moving quickly. I will tell you, when I first became a city councilor in 1998, was actually the first time we discussed the municipal jail. The jail was not totally funded until 2006. That's eight years. We had to, step by step, we had to convince the citizens of Springfield that this, what we were trying to do to create a safer city, we had to convince the citizens that we are gonna take step by step and make the case. We had to make the case. Just to let you know, the passage of the municipal...the bonding of the jail passed by 172 votes in 2004. The funding passed...no, the funding piece passed with 172 votes. The municipal bond actually passed with 53%. Did you know that when it came up for renewal, it passed with over 60%? Because the citizens knew it was working. In Springfield now, out of the top 10 cities in the state of Oregon, it has one of the largest reductions of nuisance or petty crime out of any of the top 10 cities in the state of Oregon. Because of, we had to make the case. And so I'm understanding, I think, where you are on this. You have to...I think maybe we're moving too quickly. That's my personal opinion. Now, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board. If the board is prepared to move forward on this and allow you to go ahead and vote, you know, that's obviously an option. For me personally, I think that this is an opportunity really to start, continue to gather information. This has gone through really quickly. I personally appreciate the citizen group actually coming to the Board of Commissioners and saying, "We have an issue here. We're trying to come up with a solution to solve it." And frankly, it's a pretty neat, pretty cool idea. The challenge is, and I'm hearing...I frankly don't think that the numbers I've seen doesn't necessarily prove that the rural area outside of Venida, that's basically...it's kind of a... Well, I don't wanna get into that, so I'm wanting to take care of my language. Anyway, so I don't think that that's the case. I really don't. And I don't think the numbers show that. But I think what needs to happen here is I think folks need to really get comfortable with what's happening. I think you heard the gentleman who came and talked about the ONC lands. It's gonna be a challenge. I mean, folks, when Jim Weaver was in Congress, we were harvesting 1.3 billion. He was one of the most liberal congressmen we've ever had. We were harvesting 1.3 billion. Heck, we're not even close to that now. I mean, that's just a sliver. So, you know, whether we get back to that or not. But I think this is a novel approach. I think it's an approach that's worth looking at. But I think, though, what I feel is that I think you all need to be comfortable with this. And what I'm sensing right now is people aren't necessarily comfortable with it, and they're probably looking for additional information. My colleagues, if they choose to support, I will, you know, I will likely go ahead and say, "Okay, it's gonna be up to you. You will have the chance to vote." And that's fine. But I will say that I felt like that, taken step by step, what we did in Springfield, making the case, it proved to be a winner. And like I said, citizens renewed that, the levy, which was a combined levy. You have full 24/7 patrol in the city of Springfield, plus you have funding in place to run the 100-bed municipal jail. It's a municipal jail. It's not a felon jail. It's not jail to hold felons, and it only holds men. So that's one of the cases. But I will say, from a point of cleaning up the community, it's done an incredible job. It's brought investors in downtown. And so I think overall, it's been a real positive. But it took us a total of six years to get to that...or eight years to get to that final vote compared to when we had our first discussion. So I appreciate everyone's testimony tonight. I don't...the last thing you need is for people to be...to get on each other's backs. I think this is an opportunity really for your entire community out here to really have this conversation, a dialogue, and really make a case if this is something that makes sense to you. So thank you very much for taking the time to come out and provide public comment. I personally, I appreciate it. I think it makes a lot of sense. It helps me really make a decision moving forward, so I appreciate it. So tall of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Chair Stewart, I should say. I've been in this position 11 years, and I think when I first ran to get elected, and it's still true today, I wanted to work hard to improve public safety. And finding that solution has not...we haven't found it yet. Listening to the comments today, with my experience, I think we'd be making a mistake by moving forward. I really do. I'm sorry because there's a lot of folks that have worked incredibly hard on this. That being said, I think we can go back and continue this work. But what people are gonna need to understand is that I think our budget committee members spoke pretty bluntly about the challenges that we have. I wish we could tell the state government that we want to spend lottery dollars on public safety and not on trying to promote job creation. That's just not possible. I mean, that's not possible. I didn't make that law, and I can't do that. But as I sit here and I see my count, which I probably lost count somewhere along the line, it's 45 against and 17 for. I think we had probably a packed house. My understanding, this place holds about 400 people. Probably have 400 people here this evening. And I would say that three to one was probably representative of what we had here. I don't think we could've paid for that poll any better. I mean, that's the result that we would've gotten. That being said, if we move forward with this, I'm afraid that it's actually gonna set us backwards. I really do. And I think that we need to spend more time. I want to be a partner, right? Today, whether people believe this or not, because of what they said, this was brought to us by a citizen group of people. This was not fabricated by this Board of Commissioners. This Board of Commissioners, we understand the public safety situation that we're in. We're looking for an answer. And quite frankly, I thought we had an answer here by creating this. If the citizens wanted to create this, maybe this could be duplicated, as was said in Crestwell and other areas of the county that would like to take this lead. We've talked about a public safety district for the entire county. But unfortunately, we can't create a public safety district for the entire county because the city of Eugene and Springfield and Lane County are in a partnership that we call the metro partnership, which is a boundary, metro boundary. And that boundary doesn't allow us to create a district without the support of those two entities or all three entities. When we went down this road nearly 11 years ago, or 10 years ago, the city of Eugene was not supportive of us creating the district, and we couldn't move forward. So, you know, I'm struggling with this because I've been supportive 100% of public safety since my career in this position. And I want to support a solution. And I'm afraid that with what I've heard tonight, with about 12 weeks into the election, there's an incredible amount of information that has to get gotten out. There is an incredible amount of trust that's gotta be built by people. This hasn't happened overnight. We've been working on this since October. We've had our second public hearing. We've had probably three or four board meetings. I know this has been wrote up in the register guard multiple times. And yet today, we heard all kinds of different facts that, you know, from my understanding of this, is not correct. And so we have a huge task in front of us to try to find a way to move this forward with the support of the people. And most importantly, I mean, this board, myself personally learned with the registration fee, to try to use that to fund our roads. It was pretty clear that our citizens don't have unlimited resources to help pay for county services. That fix or solution was too expensive. And I think I heard loud and clear tonight, $1.67 is gonna be a burden or hardship on the majority of people that spoke. So, you know, Mr. Reister, if you could come forward. I know that you've created a group that's been working on this. If the board doesn't move forward, and we find a way to commit to help maybe move this to November or a year from now, I mean, what...can you give me a response to that? What that would do to your group?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. The last part of your question I did not catch.
So if we don't move forward with this this evening because we're not comfortable with thinking that this is gonna be successful, but yet we use this as a learning step forward to a finer or a better proposal, maybe in November or this next year, May, if it takes us that long to do it with more public involvement, more information, is that something that your group can continue to do? Or is this, in your mind, done?
Before I answer your question, I'm gonna give you a remark. You know, this is democracy. This is the way it's supposed to work. Citizens' initiative was brought forward. We collected as much information as we could in a very short timeframe. We talked to as many people as we could, both face-to-face and on the internet and on the telephone. At the end of the day, commissioners, this is really how it's supposed to work. Rise or fail, it's about trying to come up with solutions to problems. And although I heard a lot of opposition tonight, if there's one thing that I think I did hear was recognition that we do have problems. We've stated all along that we respect the right to oppose. We are a group, and I hope our group is holding their head up high because a lot of folks...this isn't about Steve Reister. A lot of folks have worked really, really hard on this package. Our group supports the Lane County Sheriff's Office. Our group supports the Fire District. And our group supports our community and our neighbors. That's not gonna go away. I'm really, really proud of our group. On a daily basis, they're out there trying to help, trying to make a difference. At the end of the day, should you not move forward? We respect that. We get it. This was a worthy cause. And I'm sure that if this should come up in the future, and if it is about supporting that sheriff's office or that fire district, we're on board.
Commissioner Farr, go ahead.
Thank you. Listening to the testimony tonight, you know what? I am intrigued by the concept, and I like the concept, and I'm enamored with the concept. Clearly, it is one that is not ready to move forward. I think a lot of people need to hear a lot more about it. And even if they hear a lot more about it, it still may not be ready to move forward. I'm intrigued by the fact that this is a concept that would work throughout the county. And given time to explain it, perhaps that's something that we can do in the future. But the testimony tonight really changed our minds significantly. I came in this evening thinking that I was prepared to support. Yes, but no. But it's not...clearly, the folks in the district are of a different opinion at this point in time. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Many of your words, I didn't totally hear, but the intent, the content, it got lost on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Basically saying that, and I hope I'm paraphrasing correctly, Commissioner Farr, that, you know, based on what he was hearing tonight, it sounds like this isn't ready to move forward yet. And that he actually came in tonight thinking he was going to support moving it forward, but after what he heard and could hear over the phone, that the general... There needs to be more education and more time to build the support for this. And that was his general comments, if I'm paraphrasing fairly correctly. Commissioner Sorenson?
I have a few... Commissioner Farr, just one little change to that. I love the plan. I'm enamored of the plan. Education's not the right word. I think people are pretty well educated. Just more discussion to see if there's something that's been matured.
Okay, I get it. So more discussion... So, more discussion, not education.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Kyler what the timelines would be for the May and November 2016 elections. We've been kind of focused on the May election. That looks like it's not happening. I'd like to get the deadline on the May and compare it to the deadline on the November.
Chairman Stewart, Commissioner Stortson, the May deadline to get this material to the clerk is February 28th.
Okay.
I want to say it's 66 days before the primary. February 26th. So, I think it's 66 days before the primary.
Okay.
Same for the November election, so backing up.
Two months, roughly.
Two plus months, early November, so you're talking, you know.
September.
Yeah, late August, early September.
Because that would be my question to you. When the citizen group came and really made a case, not so much for the measure, but for the proposal to go to the voters, I thought that was a pretty good idea, that if citizens come forward and make a proposal, that we ought to take it seriously. One thing we haven't really talked too much about, because there was an assumption, I think, that we were going to move this forward, is, well, what about the fall period, the fall election? So, I just wanted to get your feedback on that. Because it looks like it's not going to happen if two Commissioners, three Commissioners are expressing the view that it shouldn't move forward tonight.
Why May? For our group, it was about looking at the fiscal periods, operating from July to July, both with the county and with the city of Vinita. It was about when our contracts created between the sheriff's office, and the city of Crestwell, and the city of Vinita. And what does the sheriff face for what seems like year on and year, in terms of budget cuts, which historically impact the policing district, or the policing division, excuse me, means less deputies on the road? What we were focused on was an understanding that there may be additional budget cuts for this next fiscal year. What we were focused on was this understanding that we had a lack of coverage as it was. And how could it possibly get worse? And so, what our group wanted to do was to suggest that we look at this quickly, and we see if we can enhance the service for this area before we fall victim to further cuts. And the best time to do that is May. If you go in November, you really don't get to start until the following July. So, we were looking at, you know, kind of like two years down the road. It's hard to come up with an answer for citizens about what this is going to cost when you're looking out two years. I hope I've answered your question, but really, Commissioner, it was about the timeframe, it was about what are you folks looking to do to this sheriff's department in terms of budgets, and how that impacts the community.
Commissioner Boson. Commissioner Stortson, you may recall, when we had the conversation about the sheriff's levy, we had a very similar conversation about May or November. And one of the reasons was because of that, just the way that tax revenue flows, you sort of gain, as Mr. Reister indicated, a year, because of the timing of those elections. And we had that very same dynamic back in the conversations leading up to the jail levy.
Christopher Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for those of you, I heard some comments tonight about resource officers. I will just say, my two sons are now grown, but I'm a father of two former Thurston High School kids. And what I will tell you, and in fact, as Sheriff Trapp will know, as Rick Dancer will know, as some of us will know, it only takes one person to disrupt an entire community and disrupt families. I will tell you that. So, I am personally, I am a gigantic advocate of resource officers in schools. And we have not had another incident in either Springfield or Thurston High School since. They're there, they're constantly there, they're providing protection. And until you ever go through that, and see firsthand what it does to friends, family, my only advice is, I hope you never, ever have to. It is one of the worst things you will ever see. People that you personally know, people that you personally knew whose son was killed, and you happen to have, sit down and have a conversation with them, and have absolutely no words of what to say, zero, because it happened in an instance. So, I'm a huge advocate of resource officers. Just keep that in mind, if this is something that continues to move forward. I think one of the conversations that we'll need to actually have to have is the dollar amount. I think I heard over and over again tonight, that the dollar amount per thousand seemed to be too steep for what people are willing to pay. And I think that's a conversation that I think, Mr. Reister and your group may need to go back to the drawing board. I think working with our staff, working with the sheriff, I'm not sure what the answer is, if it's even feasible. And so, I think that even that dollar per thousand needs to have, we need to take a look at that again and realize if that's the number or not. Because I heard that over and over again tonight, that a number that people came up with when they went through the dollar amount, what that was going to add, is potentially too steep. And so, I think that'd be worth that conversation having as well. Thank you, Mr. Boson.
Commissioner.
So, it must have been over two years ago when I first started having conversations with some of the folks that started a Crime Watch Vinita Facebook page, and were highly critical, not only of the city of Vinita, but also the Lane County Sheriff's Office. In fact, it was far enough ago, it was Sheriff Turner, that they were banging on very hard. And I, and the reaction from both sides was, these are a bunch of rock throwers, and we don't want to talk to them, you know, on the city and the sheriff's side somewhat. And on the other side, it was just, you know, that everybody's incompetent, why can't we get the services we want? I made an effort to try and get the sides to start talking, and deal with each other, and look for solutions. And part of that was, started the conversations around, okay, we all can describe what the problem is, and that we have this lack of coverage, there's only one officer in Vinita, and he's not even there all day, and what happens during those dark times, let alone what happens if you live just outside of Vinita? And, you know, folks that talk about how, you know, this is about you all in the country subsidizing Vinita, right now, Vinita's subsidizing your coverage. Because if you have a shot fired call, guess where the officer comes from? So, this has been a discussion back and forth for over two years. And as we looked at what was happening, you know, this last budget year, we got kind of lucky, and we were able to hold things as is through our budget. We're now moving into the post-SRS school, the Secure Rural Schools Act, where we're going to have to live on actual harvest from federal forest revenues. In the '70s, our federal forest revenues averaged $115 million a year to Lane County in today's dollars. Next year, we're looking at about $4 million coming from the federal government. That's the problem we're trying to solve. We're looking at a $6 million hole coming up in our general fund this coming year. So, these citizens who finally decided to stop throwing stones at the government that they didn't like the services they're getting from, and trying to understand the problem, did a lot of research, and found, in their research, they found out that the city of Crestwell was having exact same conversations, because they couldn't really keep their sheriff's contract going, their surrounding suburbs were being pilfered with property crime, they had all the same, and they had hired Portland State University to study the problem for them, because they were trying to decide, should we have a police force in Crestwell? What are the solutions? And low and behold, they robbed that study from Crestwell, and found that the best solution was to form a district that was larger than the city of Crestwell, or the city of Vinita. Because a city of 5,000 people is not large enough to support a police force. Folks have mentioned Junction City. We had two Junction City councilors in our audience in our last public hearing, because they are on the edge of losing their police force. They are also under several million dollars' worth of lawsuits right now, because their police force is so undermanned and understaffed, and they're having issues with HR and other issues. So, you know, small cities don't easily afford a police force. And our rural patrol has gone to almost nothing. We're basically sending our deputies from priority call to priority call, and they're really not doing any patrol. We had some great testimony, and I understand that it really, we're not ready to go into the ballot yet. It's obvious that folks don't understand all of the issues. There's a lot of misinformation out there. I heard one woman quote something from a board meeting several months ago, that was actually completely out of date, where they're no longer including the youth corps in the proposal. You know, so, the fact that people don't understand stuff that was eliminated from the proposal, what exactly the proposal is, speaks to the fact that we haven't done enough to educate people as exactly what we're asking you to vote on. And if we move to the ballot this time, I don't think we would be successful, unfortunately. Because we're, as Mr. Reister described, if we don't do something now in this area relative to public safety, we're looking at making additional cuts to our general fund budget. $6 million is 10% of our discretionary general fund. 70% of our discretionary general fund goes to the sheriff's office, the DA's office, and our youth services. That's going to hurt. We barely keep rural patrol on the street now, or at 20 hours. We start making those kind of cuts, we may be down to 16 hours, 12 hours of rural patrol. Then it gets to be a question, can we back up the deputy that we have under contract in Vinita while our patrol is down? And is that safe for that deputy that's on single patrol in Vinita, if we don't have rural patrol out there to be their backup? It's a serious question. And I understand the urgency of why the group was considering moving this forward so fast, because they were trying to head off having to answer that question. If we get 10 deputies in this area with supervision and all, that's plenty of backup, and stands on its own. You don't need to worry about what's happening in the rest of the county. If we make cuts to the sheriff's rural patrol, that district would stand on its own, under its own budget. A budget that has five budget committee members that would come from the district by law. You know, that was what they were looking to do. So, I really, one, I want to thank the citizens. I can't tell you, I've been to some of their meetings. They're not getting paid for all this. They're putting an incredible amount of hours into research, trying to develop this situation. You know, they look for what they thought was the best solution. Unfortunately, it's not ready for primetime, because it's obvious there's some great misunderstandings about what it does. There's also some great misunderstandings about Lane County's budget. I heard one gentleman state that all we need to do was concentrate our money on public safety, and everything would be fine. But there was another gentleman that testified about borders, and walls, and buckets, you know, and how they prevent us from spending the money, you know. I would give up my seat today on the board, if somebody could explain to me a way I could adequately fund public safety with our existing resources, and not get arrested for doing I have looked under every seat cushion. I have pushed every limit legally we could with transferring monies around. The rest of the board's done the same thing. You know, we've been sued by one of our own unions for transferring money from one program into supporting rural patrol. You know, we've gone everywhere in that direction. At the same time, we've taken Lane County from 14 departments down to eight, and eliminated those department heads. We've cut any staff we had. We've cut our own compensation. We've cut our office budgets, trying to squeeze every nickel we can and move it into public safety. So, it is a crisis. And anyone that wants to come in and meet with me, you're all my constituents in this area, and go over the budget, I've made that offer time and time again, out on the internet, I will sit down with anyone for as long as it takes to try and get you to understand our budget and our constraints, and the fact that we're not hiding money. And whether the registered guard correctly prints things or not, you know, we did not move money out of the general fund from the jail, and from the sheriff's office. We've actually put $5 million more into the jail since we passed the levy than we originally projected. It's one of the reasons why the sheriff was able to open 20 additional jail bits. You know, that story was in the guard today. So, we have a job to do, here as the board, the citizens. We need to get folks to trust and understand the proposal that's in front of them. We also maybe need to sharpen our pencils and see if we can get it to be more affordable. Unfortunately, I can tell you, I've helped work on this budget quite a bit. It is really hard to get it any cheaper than it is if you want to have two deputies on duty 24 hours a day. That is just a big chunk of money to have that. If you wanted to go down to one deputy, and then we're starting having to worry about backup, we could cut this dent in just about half. But when you start talking about having to have two deputies on 24/7, you're talking at least 10 to 11 FTE right there, and that's a lot of money. You're also talking about cars, you're talking about training, you're talking about folks that have to maintain certifications, you know, one woman mentioned what happens in a lawsuit. One of the ways to prevent that is you send all your deputies to be trained, so you don't get sued over silly things. So, I understand what I've heard today. I'm not willing to move forward with this at this time. I think we need to step back, look at the proposal, make sure it's exactly what people want, and then go back and do some education, build some trust, because there's obviously some misunderstandings about our budget as it stands today, and about the budget that was proposed for the district. So, with that, I'm going to look to the board and see if there's anyone that has any desire to bring a motion forward, or if we just need to let this die for lack of emotion in a second.
Pat, I'm going to ask you verbally, you're not willing to make a motion to move this forward, are you?
Negative.
Negative, was the response to that. Without a motion to move the finalization of the district forward in a second, we're done for now. So, with that, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Stort. It's actually his meeting as chair, and let him close the meeting.
All right. Well, with that, I want to thank everyone for coming and giving some great input. I think we've learned some great lessons this evening. And with that, we are, the Board of Commissioners, is adjourned.